Good morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Bretafell.
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Olivier. Vice President Brandau.
Here.
And President Soria.
Here. Next, we have the invocation by David Standley, Fresno Police Officer and Outreach Pastor for Valley Christian Center. If you can come forward. And then I'm gonna ask everyone to stay standing. We will do the flag salute upon conclusion.
Now, I have pretty loud voice. It's an honor to do this this morning. If we could all just bow like this. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for being with us and present with us. We invite you into this meeting, Lord. We invite the spirit of unity, Lord, that would be in the best interest of our community, Lord, and moving forward, Lord. We just thank you so much. For what often we can get to lift you up and praise you for the things that, Lord, that you don't get credit for when things are avoided. So I thank you, Lord, that we had such a good grizzly fest here in our community, Lord, that you kept at a safe distance, Lord. But I also continue to lift up San Fe, Texas, Lord, look up their community that they've had to endure over this past year, Lord. And just pray, Lord, that your glory be... Lift it up and... That's for our hometown president, Jesus of God's people, said.
Yes, I have several changes to the agenda. The first one is the 10:20 a.m. item, Appearance by Gonzalo Umbrella to Discuss Damages to His Wheelchair by a Fax Driver. That item has been moved to June 14, 2018, per the request of the Speaker. The next item is the 4B Workshop Regarding the Status of Marijuana Regulations and Taxes. Vice President Brandau requested the workshop be continued to June 14 council meeting. Item 5 a.m. Closed Session with Labor Negotiators. Firefighter Local 753, Unit 5 Fire Basic and International Association of Fire Fighters, Local 753, Unit 10 Fire Management has been removed from the agenda. CFPEA will remain on the agenda. Those are all the changes I have.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any changes to the agenda? CNN, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Councilmember Capriolio and second by Councilmember Brandau. Any opposition? CNN, the motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Next, we'll go on to the consent calendar. Would any councilmember like to pull an item for discussion? Councilmember Brandau?
But I would like, I would like to pull Item 1E, 1G, and 1J.
Item 1E, 1G, and 1J? So the screen is clear. So we'll go out to the audience. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on the consent cali... Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, is there a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. And those items that were pulled will be heard after the ceremonial presentations. Next, we'll go to the ceremonial presentations. First up, Councilmember Capriolio. And this is gonna be your proclamation for Lynette Zeleni Day.
Hello, folks. Good morning, folks. Good morning, folks. Better, better. Glad we're all here this morning. Thank you all for being here. I have the honor and privilege to make a very special proclamation this morning, two, actually. And the first one we're gonna do, as many of you know, you've heard me say over and over, the crown jewel of my district is Cal State University Fresno, AKA Fresno State Bulldogs. That's why I'm wearing my lapel pin, my Bulldog tie, Bulldog sock. No, just kidding. Yeah, I'm gonna get some of those, I'm sure, after this. So anyway, this is a proclamation for a very special person. It's been an honor for me personally to work with her over the years in my office. And she's part of the, intricate part of the team at Fresno State. And so she, come up here, Lynette. Join me, please. This is Provost Lizelensky. Round of applause. She, she is the Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs at Fresno State. She is so good that we're gonna lose her. Cal State Bakersfield has offered her the President of that university. We're so proud of you. She has a long list of accomplishments, and you'll hear about a few of those. But I just wanted to recognize her for her work in the community and for her dedication to the students at Fresno State. It's, you're an amazing person, amazing person. So we're gonna miss you for that. And I wanted to add a couple of words to, to send you off with. And you will do amazingly bold, right? At Fresno State, you know Dr. Castro, everything is bold. And he's living up to that expectation. So you will take bold ideas and innovative ideas down there, and hopefully we've helped you in the preparation for your presidency. And congratulations and best wishes on the next new chapter of your life. I say a few words?
Well, it's such a privilege. This is my 30th year at Fresno State, and it's been an absolute delight to also serve in Fresno. And I see Chief Dyer here. We serve on the Marjory Mason Board together. And so we will miss Fresno very much. But we're very happy that we'll be just to the south and your neighbors, and look forward to many partnerships and collaborative efforts to raise the Central Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Hold on. Madam Clerk, would you do the honors, please?
Whereas Dr. Lynette Lizensky has demonstrated a lifelong commitment to passion and for higher education. Whereas Dr. Lizensky has served the Fresno State community for 30 years, 1988 through to 2018, in several different capacities, including Professor of Psychology, Chair of Department of Psychology, Associate Dean for the Craig School of Business, Dean and Associate Vice President for Continuing and Global Education, and Vice Provost. Dr. Lizensky has operated as the university's Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs since 2014. And whereas in June 2018, the Fresno State community will regretfully lose Dr. Lizensky in an official capacity as she moves on to her next challenge as President of California State University Bakersfield. Her appointment to the presidency of Bakersfield State marks the first time a woman has been selected for this role, a historic and well-deserved achievement. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby recognize and thank Dr. Lizensky for all she has provided and will continue to provide for the Central California's growing system. Dr. Lizensky is a model academic educator, administrator, and civil servant who will be sorely missed in our community. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 24, 2018, to be Lynette Lizensky Day in the City of Fresno.
Thank you. And the lady that joined us, they were, they've been friends since they, she was 12 years old, they were 12 years old, and she flew all the way from Dallas just to celebrate this with us. And of course Larry Salinas, he is kinda Mr. Bulldog, I guess you'd say. He's everywhere at all times. So thank you all very much. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio? I just also just wanna personally congratulate Dr. Lynette Lizensky for all her work. I know that I've had the pleasure to work with you on a number of occasions, and I just congratulate you. I'm so proud, and it's exciting to see that Kelsey Bakersfield will have a woman leader.
Thank you all. Next, you know, we always enjoy the opportunity to recognize peace officers. And this morning is a very special occasion for that recognition. So today, the presentation will be for Officer Ron Flores. So Officer Flores, come down and join me, please, along with Deputy Chief Karosko, Captain Farah, and Sergeant Luhon, and Chief Dyer, of course. I'm sorry, Chief.
Congratulations.
So last week, I learned that Officer Flores was recognized with the Respect the Law Award of the Year. Respect the Law Award of the Year. Not a month, not a day, but of the year. So I wanted to make sure we brought him to City Hall to thank him and acknowledge all the hard work that you do. He's a very unique resource officer. He works at Central Unified School District as an SRO. So not only did he receive the Respect the Law Award of the Year, he's innovative, he's the first and I think only SRO that rides a bicycle at the high school level, which is really, it sounds like, really? Well, it's very innovative. Why? Because he can cover so much more territory. And all the students get to see him and wave to him and talk to him. Not only that, he gets out into the neighborhood, and he goes through the neighborhoods and meets all the people there. So it's community policing at its finest. So I want to acknowledge you for that, and I hope the others join forces with you because that's a great way to get into the community and get people to come together. It's really nice. And there's a third aspect here. So he also developed and implemented See Something, Say Something Week at the high school. So during that week, magic comes out, fellow officers that are here this morning, and they talk about bullying and gang violence and all the trials and tribulations that face the children of today, of the high school students. And they also talk about an active shooting situation tragically. But we have to be prepared. Nowadays, you have to be prepared, and your efforts in that regard are greatly appreciated. And I wanted to acknowledge you on those three items. And I see maybe the Chief would like to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ron is one of our most dedicated officers in Fresno Police Department, been there for many, many years, served on the SWAT team, he's been a former K-9 handler. Ron has also done an incredible job as a Student Resource Officer. You may have heard in the paper here recently about a threat that was made regarding the Central High School Prom. Ron was the individual that was instrumental in getting right on that case, initiating that investigation. And by that evening, we had the individual identified and arrested for that crime, as well as having over a dozen officers over at Central High School's Prom to ensure the safety of students. So what Ron has done in terms of the active shooter training, he developed that training, as well as See Something, Say Something. And that training is now being replicated and will be replicated throughout the Fresno Unified School District. So this is someone who is, goes above and beyond the call of duty. He's active in his church, he's active with the seniors, and his outreach program, this is the person that I would say truly emulates what we want in our officers today. And he is a consummate professional. Ron, we love you, and we thank you for your service to the Fresno Police Department and to this community. God bless you.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. This is actually, I'm so thankful for just being here and getting what I'm getting today. And I wanna thank the Police Department, my fellow officers, and I can't forget my wife. I forgot her in the last one. Don't wanna get in trouble, I wanna thank my wife. There's been some stuff that's said like, during, like in SWAT, it all comes back down to family. And I mean, there's times that we have to leave. I had to leave on my wife's birthday to go out to a call. So I just appreciate my family for supporting me in everything that I do. Thank you.
Would you, let's bring your family down here. How about that? Let's bring them down, and we'll do some photo ops. Come on down. All you folks, join this fantastic individual. Behind every good man is a great family. That's what I've been told. Of course. We gotta get the VIP grandmother down here.
Officer Flores, as your family comes and joins you, I just wanna personally thank you. I represent the Central Unified area, and so I'm so grateful for the work that you do and the relationships that you've built with the school administrators and, most importantly, with the students. So we commend you on your hard work, and anything that you need for us to continue to support you, we're here for you as well. Thank you.
So if you'd read the proclamation as we get everybody down here, and we're, do some photos.
Whereas Officer Ron Flores is the Student Resource Officer, SRO, assigned to Central Unified School District, CUSD. And whereas Officer Flores has been with the Fresno Police Department for a 20-year career. And whereas as a Student Resource Officer, he works tirelessly to improve the safety at CUSD schools, where he provides staff and administration with classes in drug recognition and gang detection, as well as working closely with the Assistant Supervisor, Superintendent, to increase visibility and vigilance on the campus and sporting events to increase safety. And whereas aside from being a valuable asset to the Fresno Police Department, Officer Flores donates his time to several community projects and admirable causes. And whereas on May 2018, Officer Flores was recognized with the Pacific Central District Optimistic International Respect the Law and Award of the Year in recognition of his service to the residents of the City of Fresno, which reaches above and beyond the call of duty. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 24, 2018, to be Ron Flores Day in the City of Fresno.
Thank you all very much for being here. What a great support team. All right, let's go out in the streets, boys, and get this town civilized.
Next, we have a special presentation by Councilmember Olivier doing a proclamation of Orlando King Day.
As he comes down, Larry wanted to make a brief comment, if we may. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Councilman Capriolio. I just wanted to thank each and every one of you, including the mayor, on behalf of the Mitchell family, as you guys adjourned this morning on behalf of Captain Mark Mitchell. You may have read in the newspaper yesterday that we tragically lost Captain Mitchell, who was a longtime friend of mine, his family. And tragically, the Mitchells lost their youngest son 40 years ago next month. He was my best friend in high school, at Fresno High School, and he too lost his life in a tragic car accident on graduation night. So the Mitchell family has sustained such an unimaginable tragedy in their family. And I, I wanna thank the council, and I also wanna thank Chief Dyer and Mr. Michael at the airports for the motorcycle detail, bringing Captain Mitchell home for the final, for the final time with dignity and honor. He was a Foreign Service Officer, he was a U.S. Embassy employee, and a remarkable young man and friend. And the chief, you have a note waiting for you on your desk probably this afternoon. And Councilman Capriolio and Laura Rios for all your help. It meant so much to the family to be able to welcome this, this serviceman and hero back home to Fresno where he was born and raised. So thank you for letting me interrupt the meeting, and thank you for adjourning on behalf of Captain Mark Mitchell.
Thank you very much.
Blake and Orlando, you wanna come on down and meet me in front? Thank you, Council President, and thank you all for being here. Let's have you folks turn and face our gallery this morning. You know, ceremonial presentations are always an excellent opportunity to highlight things that are going right in our city. And of course, after you all leave, that's when the council will, will spend several hours on all the things that are wrong with the city. But while you're here, we like to highlight some of the great things that are going on. And this is definitely one of the wonderful things, a success story, a story of hard work and determination and hope, and a story of the future. And this young man here, Orlando, your last name's King, Orlando King, is a resident of the 7th District that I represent. So this is the kind of Fresno story, this is the kind of 7th District story that we love to hear. And so for that story, I'm gonna turn it over to Blake Consal from Fresno Regional Workforce Development.
Thank you so much, Councilman. We are happy that Mr. King is here today, taking off time from work to join us. The, the city is one of the co-founders of the Workforce Board with the County of Fresno, and we like to bring a human face to show you what, what we're doing with the Department of Labor Resources that we're bringing into the community. And we have a video, a brief video, that we're gonna show that I think will be better than me talking more about Mr. King and all of his success.
My name's Orlando Marcel King Jr., and I live in Fresno City. My career goal is production labor, and I'm currently working with MB Technology, and I am a starter role operator.
When I first met Mr. King, he had completed a program with Sacramento Job Corps. From that point on, he was helping his grandmother take care of her as a care provider with in-home supportive services. We had put him through some training in the construction trades. We had helped him develop his resume and work on his interviewing skills, and then helped him find a position with MB Technologies as a starter role operator, and has been very successful there.
As a starter role operator, you take these giant rolls that are like rolled up into carpets, 100 to like 85 to 100 pounds. You put it on a machine, you roll it, you roll it onto the machine, you cut it, then when you're done cutting it, you cut 25 rolls. In total, you'll have 125 cut, five by five. And then after you're done with one whole pallet, which is 125 rolls, you go to the front, get the forklift, and you bring it up to the front and start faxing.
I think the biggest barriers for Mr. King was his work history. That was something that we were kinda starting from scratch again, you know? In-home supportive services was income coming in, but he was taking care of a family member. So this wasn't in front of a solid supervisor or employer. So we had to get him exposed to those type of elements. We did a on-the-job training to help get him the experience and training that he needed and build the confidence that he needed to be successful.
Workforce Connection helped me with resume building, mock interviews. We got an OSHA 10 certification, CPR, forklift certifications, and we also, we got exposed to multiple trade unions. The most important thing I learned about myself is, number one, safety. If you're not safe on the job, you can get yourself hurt and others. And I learned that communication is important too as well. If you're not communicating with nobody, how will they know how you feel or what's, what's going on in your life? And I also learned that, that always work hard because you don't know who's watching you out there, and, and that your boss might like, I like this guy, you know what, I'm gonna recommend him to people in the future.
I think what makes Mr. King outstanding, the one thing, one of the many things that stand out is, he's caring. He has a big heart. He gets along with every single person, no matter where he's at. He's a natural networker, he's a natural doer, he's a leader. He kinda rallies the troops together. If, if he ever saw someone slacking in training, he'd be the first person to root him on and pick him up so that they can cross the finish line successfully. And that's, and that's what I noticed about him, is he was different from everybody else, and that's why I chose him for this award.
You know, I, and Blake, I'm gonna put you on the spot because you gave me a copy of that, and I liked some of the things that, that are on that, that sheet of paper about Orlando. So can you say a few of them, like how he was taking care?
Okay. So Mr. King was taking care of his grandmother at home, but he wanted to get better opportunities. So he contacted our program, we got him into a training program. He, he performed very, very well at his training, but he still had to work. Were able to get him an initial job called an on-the-job training, and he so impressed the employer at the on-the-job training that he was, he was hired when the training was over. And all of his, the various staff that worked with him and his fellow students always comment on your unbelievably positive attitude, sir. And that's really good because a lot of time, if people aren't employed, it can be a little bit stressful, and having positive people around not only helps yourself, but helps everybody else. So thank you at all those levels.
And I just whispered during the video, I whispered to him, just, just keep at it, this is only the beginning for you. You're, you know, you work hard, you hustle, you're gonna, you're gonna go places, and it's true. So with that, we have a very special proclamation for you. Madam Clerk, can you please read the proclamation?
Whereas Orlando King has been awarded the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board's Quarterly Outstanding Achievement Award, and whereas Orlando King has successfully completed courses in sheet metal, plumbing, painting, and ironwork, as well as continued on-the-job training. And whereas Orlando King has preserved, persevered through several struggles along the way to becoming employed with MB Technology. And whereas Orlando King has made a commitment to continue to better himself, his family, and those around him through his work. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council members do proclaim 24th Day of May to be Orlando King Day in the City of Fresno.
Blake, thank you for bringing Orlando to the city. Thank you.
Council President, before you move to the next one, I'd like to add to the list of changes to the agenda that the proclamation, excuse me, the presentation of certificates for the Fresno Chamber Junior Board has been pulled.
Great, thank you. So our next presentation, and Blake, you can come on down again, we're gonna do the Good morning, everyone. So I think it is appropriate to follow the previous presentation because this is recognizing one of those businesses who has been a participant of this program. And so I wanna also, again, welcome Blake to this presentation, and also Gail, who is the President of Workforce Connection. And so each quarter, the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board selects a business that have mentored, provided internships, work experiences, and/or employed their job seekers in their youth and adult programs. This year, I'm very proud to say, which is the first-quarter award winner, is a business in my district, District 1. So we want to acknowledge United Western Industries. And I'll give you guys this proclamation. United Western Industries, a company that specializes in metal fabrication services. This company knows that sometimes it is hard to find individuals who have the skills they require, and for that reason, they believe in training and mentoring folks, young people included, and also promote their own employees. So their staff continuously provides constructive feedback and a positive work environment in which employees are able to thrive in. Representatives from United Western Industries consistently attend the Workforce Connection events, and over the past nine months have hired three participants, which is pretty awesome, from their manufacturing training program who have excelled in our now permanent employees. Those are the types of stories that are really key to sharing because we know how transformational a job is to an individual. And so I'm just very proud that we are able to house this business in our community. Again, and so this is really a testament of United Western Industries' willingness and determination to provide the training and support necessary for job seekers here in the City of Fresno and in our region. So they are very, really deserving of this recognition. So they are very, really deserving of this recognition. I just want to congratulate them and just continue to encourage folks like United Western Industries to participate, to provide our young people and our adults that are seeking jobs opportunity. So did you want to go ahead and add something?
Just to thank Gail Pirtle, who's the President of United Western Industries, for being here today and for having other staff, and I guess previous owners too of the company who have been here. They've been around for 45 years, good manufacturing jobs in Fresno, and so we're very happy that they, they let us refer qualified people to them.
And do we have a little video?
We do have a little video.
Okay, so let's show the little video and then I'll let Gail speak.
United Western Industries has been in business since 1971. We are a manufacturer of heavy-duty truck parts, but we have been working with Workforce Connection since 2017.
I nominated United Western Industries because from the moment I first met them, their staff, they were very welcoming, very warm, very encouraging, and they really took the time to meet with our participants and get to know them.
The individuals we have hired from Workforce Connection, they come to work prepared to work, they come to work on time, they're here to learn, they're very eager to learn, they play close attention to detail. You teach them something and they retain it. And they come to work every day, which is extremely important in any manufacturing industry.
United Western Industries has, they gave me confidence. They treated me very important, like, you know, I've never been treated that way. It's one of those things where you go to school, you work hard, and you get what you work for, you know? And it feels good, you know? Especially getting the job on the spot, you know, being confident and just, you know, hope for the best, and I got the best.
Workforce Connection has assisted our business in quite a few different ways. One, they were able to send us individuals that already had all the soft skills that were needed, which is one of the biggest issues we deal with hiring people. And two, they were very well-trained. As far as the amount of training they received, it was very adequate for what we're doing.
Workforce, they put us in Fresno City campus where we learned welding, we learned pneumatic and hydraulic fluids, we learned electrical, we learned forklift class. Everything in that class seemed like it was perfect for this job.
United Western Industries is outstanding because they really are a family. They're very warm, very welcoming, they're invested in the development of their employees. They really want to see people come in and stay with the company and grow with the company.
I've worked at a lot of places, and United Western is like family. Everything they do, they, they want you to better yourself, they want you to come be here on time, they want you to just be, be a part of something, a whole. And it's great. I, I love this job.
Let's give a round of applause to United Western Industries for their hard work. And again, their commitment to training our people from the, from the community. So I'll give an opportunity to Gail, who's the owner of United Western Industries.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate this honor, appreciate Workforce. We go to Workforce because they do train their individuals so well, and they do show up on time. They're eager. They've, they've gone to Workforce because they want something better in their lives. They want an opportunity. And, you know, we all get that opportunity in life, and sometimes you have to grasp it. I was given an opportunity back in 1996, yeah, in the teens. I came to work at United Western when Cliff was the owner. Cliff saw something in me. He hired me as a bookkeeper. And after some creative bookkeeping, I now own the place. And... Yes. But I mean, he mentored me. He was, was my role model. He mentored me. To this day, I still go to him, even though I, I own the place, I go to him. He's my mentor. He was my opportunity. I want to give the opportunity to others, to other young folks, to pass it on to them. I won't be at United Western forever, but some of my employees will. It will be passed to them. And Bruce Ketch has been a valuable employee, an opportunity. And that's what we look for. We look for young people to come in from Workforce to help give that opportunity. And that's why I appreciate the award. I appreciate Workforce. I appreciate what you've done. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gail. Did you want to?
Yes, I do have one thing to say.
I don't need that.
When I interviewed her, I knew her previous boss, who she had worked for for about 15 years. And she went home for a year because she had three ranches to manage. And after one year at home, her husband said, "You need to get a job." So she came to us. So I seen who she had worked for, who was Hank Devidian, and I knew if she could work for him for 15 years, she could certainly work for us. So I had a sign over my desk for her to read. I said, "Read the sign." The sign said, "Intelligence is when you spot a flaw in your boss's reasoning. Wisdom is when you retain, refrain from pointing it out." I said, "Read the sign." I said, "You understand it?" She said, "I understand." Well, a few years later, I said, "Where's my sign?" Oh, she says, "I have it." Now she owns it. Congratulations, sir.
We're going to do a special presentation celebrating National Public Works Week. Does anyone else join in? Do you want to go ahead and get started? Okay, so just before then Scott starts, I'll say a couple words. So May 20th through May 26th is celebrated, what is called Nation Celebrates Public Works Week. So we know that public works is so critical to many of the services that our city provides to the residents, and really that impacts quality of life issues here in the City of Fresno. So I'm very proud to be able to join the city manager, obviously Scott Mosher, our Public Works Director amongst his team, because it really takes a team to be able to, one, make sure that we're providing clean water, disposing of solid waste, build roads, bridges, plan and implement mass transit, and remove water on roadways. Also, make sure that we replant trees when, you know, trees need to be removed. I know that those are some issues that we've have to dealt with in our neighbors, in our neighborhoods. And so I just want to thank them for all the work that they do in really keeping, having our city move forward. So I want to thank them and congratulate them during this special week.
Thank you, Council President. And this is a national celebration, National Public Works Week, and I'm pleased to be joined by my colleagues here from Public Utilities and Transportation, just recognizing and being a representative of the hundreds of hard-working men and women in the community who provide essential services that we often take for granted. It's, it's the folks who respond to calls in the middle of the night when there's flooding on the street, down trees, block sewers. It's every morning that we wake up, that we turn on the, turn on the faucet, and we, we count on providing, having clean drinking water, roll the cans to the curb, the trash will be picked up, or that we can drive down the streets safely, have those be maintained. So also just want to recognize the folks who are committed to our infrastructure projects and often work long hours to ensure that, that parks, that police substations, street projects, Recharge Fresno, Fulton Street, BRT, that those projects are delivered on time and on budget. And again, to say, we couldn't do what we do without leadership of our mayor, of our council, and our city manager. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Scott. And I think everything that has been covered that I wanted to say, but, you know, I just want to point out that we do have over 1,000 employees in 11 different divisions doing this work for the city and the community. And we are so lucky to have the talented staff that, that serves the community. So from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you all and your teams. So thank you for everything you do.
Awesome. So Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas National Public Works Week, NPWW, was instituted as a public education campaign by the American Public Works Association, APWA, in 1960, calling attention to the importance of the various services provided by public works in our community, which are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services play a pivotal role in the health, safety, and quality of life for the citizens of Fresno. And whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the skill and dedication of public work professionals, including engineers and administrators, field staff, and office staff representing the City of Fresno. And whereas public works professionals design, build, operate, maintain, and protect the transportation systems and equipment, water supply infrastructure, sewage and refuse disposal systems, public buildings and other structure and facilities that are vital to the citizens of Fresno. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Bran and the council members of the City of Fresno do hereby call upon citizens and civic organizations to recognize the contributions which the Department of Public Works, Transportation, and Public Utilities provide every day towards our comfort and quality of life, and do hereby proclaim May 20th through 26th, 2018, to be National Public Works Week in the City of Fresno.
Thank you.
Scott, you and your team are fantastic. Admiral, congratulations. The things you do for our community and the team that you have here, and the employees, and we're all employees of the City of Fresno, but those that aren't here, they need to be congratulated as well. And we thank each and every one of you, absolutely. Thank you.
Great, so we have one last proclamation. I have the pleasure of presenting this now, I believe for the fourth year in a row. I want to call on down Jeff Robinson, Martin Rodriguez, and Sawyer Sindell, is Sawyer? Oh, yeah. So if you guys want to come on down, we are doing a special presentation for the Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade, which will be taking place on June 2nd. Welcome. So this year, I have again, like I said, the distinct pleasure of presenting it for the fourth year in a row. We are celebrating the 28th Annual Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade, which is really a celebration of our LGBT community, the contributions that they make to the City of Fresno. This year, you know, it provides an opportunity for us to celebrate their commitment and dedication. That ensures that this event takes place every year. I know that you guys have been doing it for now a long time, and so I want to thank them for their hard work in ensuring that this happens. This is a family-friendly event intended, one, to increase inclusiveness and acceptance of the LGBT community. The Fresno Pride Parade and Festival includes a parade of over 50 floats, there's various informational booths, and also food vendors. I'll be participating again this year. There's also guest speakers, they have music, live performers, and an award ceremony to honor individuals who have made a positive impact and a difference here in the City of Fresno. This event is hosted by the Fresno Rainbow Pride, a community-led committee that works to promote the social well-being of individuals within the LGBT community through education, advocacy, and entertainment. So I do want to encourage our community members to come out and support this great event. It's an opportunity to show and demonstrate our communal acceptance for the LGBT residents and increase awareness of the issues that impact them. So again, I want to thank them for all their hard work and dedication to, to ensure that this happens every year. It's a great event. I also just want to give a shout out to our PD, to Chief Dyer. I know that every year we have officers out there ensuring that this event goes well. So I want to thank him for, for that. And just if you guys want to share a couple words, maybe a little bit more information about the parade?
Thank you. This will be our 28th Annual Parade and Festival. It's going to be Saturday, June 2nd. We want to make sure that everyone knows that everyone is invited to come join us and celebrate this day. It's a different type of cultural awareness for everyone, and you're all welcome to come. It is a family affair. We do have events all the way from children up to our seniors. We make it accessible for everyone. So I really want to thank Our Savior Lutheran Church, who is our sponsor of our Children's Garden, who will be making sure that the children have activities and there's some supervision for the bounce houses and stuff like that. So everyone is welcome. I encourage the whole city council to please come be our guests. We invite you, if you would like to walk or ride in the parade, you would be our guests, and we would be honored to have you there. We also would be honored to have you at the festival site. All of your names will be on a guest list, so you can just come in with your staff, and we will make a presentation and acknowledge you at the festival with our folks there. So we would really appreciate anybody to come out that would like to. Chief Dyer, that goes to you too.
Great. So before we read the proclamation, I did want to thank our city manager, the mayor's office, for working with us in terms of making sure that we address all the issues as, you know, we have their certain requirements for a parade. So I know that they're making this a possibility this year again. So we, we, yeah, we want to thank them because it wouldn't have been able to be done without you guys. So City Clerk, if you would read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas the 28th Annual Fresno Pride Parade is held in the City of Fresno on Saturday, June 2nd, 2018, and invites people from all over Fresno County and the Central Valley to participate in the 2018 Fresno Rainbow Pride Festival, where the activities are provided to educate, celebrate, and commemorate each other and the rich diversity of our community. And whereas the City of Fresno recognizes that its entire diverse population should have equal rights and will speak against any oppression and discrimination which diminishes the quality of life for any City of Fresno resident or visitor, including those in its lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community. And whereas it is the duty of all Fresno to advocate for those people who experience hardship as a result of discrimination and inequality, because it is only through the community's unity that we overcome injustices towards all groups of people. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and City Council does hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2018, as Fresno Rainbow Pride Parade Day in the City of Fresno.
Mayor, I just want to figure out if Councilmember Baines is going to join us. So if you can just give us a second to make sure that that happens. I know that we have a special presentation next. So before we go on to the next special presentation, what I'm going to do is, we're going to do approval of the minutes. So are there any changes to the minutes of May 17th?
No changes.
No changes. So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio and second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? CNN motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Next, I'm going to go to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. As Larry had mentioned earlier, I request that we adjourn the meeting today in memory of Captain Mark Mitchell. He passed away on May 6th in a car accident.
He joined the Army after he graduated from Fresno State. He was an SAE, as I was, and he will be sorely missed, and our thoughts and prayers are with his family. And I wanted to thank Kevin and Paul for making very special arrangements on the tarmac of the airport to facilitate this important event. So thank you for that. I didn't get a chance to welcome Frontier Airlines to Fresno the other night, and thank the team of the airport, they're here today. And so I'll have Kevin, when he comes up, give us a little bit of insight into Frontier. It's really exciting, really exciting for Fresno. Not only does it give us great access, but also great prices from Fresno to Denver. So I'm trying to tease you a little bit with that, so Kevin can fill in the blanks and tell you how good it's going to be. Last Friday, we did a ribbon-cutting event at Irwin Atticott Elementary School for Reflection Garden, and Chief Dyer was there. Fresno Unified School Superintendent Bob Nelson and many other dignitaries. It was a great event for all the kids that attend that wonderful school. Also, Grizzly Fest. So we mentioned earlier Grizzly Fest, what a huge success. I was there both nights, it was exciting, it was a great time, thanks to Parks, the Police Department, Vartan and Aaron, the IAN group. And it was great to see everyone working together to bring something so special to Fresno. And I think the numbers will come in, I think it'll bring in over $2 million to our economy, plus what transpired at the park. So hotel rooms, and food, and gas, and clothing, and people from France were here, all over the world in the States, our great United States, it was quite an event.
Selfies with Chief Dyer.
Oh yeah, selfies with Chief Dyer, that was pretty exciting, we saw some of that. So anyway, it was a great event, and thanks to Fresno and everyone that helped put that together, it was an amazing event. And I also want to thank Public Works Department, they got fountainway paved, it's off of cedar and shields. And this street was so bad, we teasingly said you needed a four-wheel-drive vehicle to access the residences there. So Public Works, Brian, his crew, and everybody did a fantastic job, again, as usual, and I can't thank them enough. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. In addition to Captain Mitchell, I would ask that the city council also adjourn this meeting in memory of Mayor Harvey Hall of Bakersfield. And I know that there are many people here that know him, that have worked with him on different things. Of course Fresno and Bakersfield very closely related. We just sent one of our best to be the new president of CSUB from Fresno State. So the two cities working together to solve problems in the valley. But he died after a brief illness from a rapidly progressive unspecified disease. And he was 77 years old, and the city of Bakersfield's longest-serving mayor. And he left office in 2017. He championed community unity, litter cleanup, helping the homeless population, and mentoring the city's young people. And Bakersfield Mayor Harvey Hall was a huge Grizzly fan and a season ticket holder to the Grizzlies all those years. So rest in peace Harvey, and thanks for being a friend to Fresno from down there in Bakersfield. And then I would ask that we would adjourn this meeting in his memory. Thank you, Council President.
Great. Councilmember Brendel.
Council President, I just actually had a question I thought of, and it's for City Manager Wilma. I was wondering if, I think we just finished a five-year performance review for our trash haulers Mid Valley and Allied. Is it possible for me to get that review?
Yeah, I can look into it and get back to you.
All right, thank you. That's it, Council President.
Perfect. So I think the screen is clear, I just have a couple of reports to make. I actually did, participated in the tour of the Amazon's Fulfillment Center. It was exciting to get really a sneak peek of the construction site and see already a lot of people at work, so that was exciting. This happened this past Tuesday. Also, just want to thank Congressman Costa, Supervisor Pacheco, Trustee Payne, Trustee De La Cerda, Trustee Cusares, and Trustee Cox for participating in a panel that I had this past Saturday for our last session of the District One Young Councilmember Program. So we will be celebrating them and their families in a couple of weeks. Some of them are graduating and moving on to college, so it's an exciting time for them. Next, just also want to recognize the Jakara Movement, they had a benefit gala this past Sunday. It was a great weekend to get together with community and support our young people within the Sikh community. And so just an exciting event with some great food. So next, I think after Councilmember Reports, we're going to hold off on the special presentation till Councilmember Baines comes. So what we'll go ahead and do, we had a couple items that were pulled from consent calendar, so we'll go ahead and take those items. Councilmember Brendel pulled item 1E, 1G, and 1J. So we'll go ahead and start off with the first item, item 1E. Hi Kevin.
Good morning. Kevin, I just wanted to pull this item because you and I had a meeting this week, and during that meeting, well, let me start by saying, I went on the One Voice Trip to Washington, DC with some other local officials to talk about a host of needs in the valley. And I went to Fresno, the air terminal, at 4:45 in the morning, and I thought, you know, this is going to be easy. Look, the lines were long, the parking lot was full, I had to park way out there. I was, it's just amazing how many people are using our air terminal, and how many people are using the facility that you're in charge of. So during our meeting, we talked a little bit about parking, and I know we have something to vote on that today, and I'm very supportive of that. But I thought it would be really an appropriate time for you to talk about expansion, and specifically maybe parking, but some of the needs that you're seeing because of the growth.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and talk about this, because we really have seen substantial growth at our airport. 34% growth since we came out of the Great Recession. And recently, we released a media announcement that the first quarter of this year alone is 10%, which is unprecedented. We're on pace this year to break another record. In fact, we were flirting with the 1.6 million number with regard to passengers in and out of our airport in 2018. It's really exciting, you just don't see that on a regional level, you know, and we have some, here recently, we've had growth. We've had additional flights to now Morelia, Mexico, in addition to Guadalajara. Let me step back a second. The growth we've seen even this quarter at over 10%. Historically, the last couple of years, that's been on the international side, and we know that, that's just an unmet demand. But domestically, it's also been 10%, and that's a huge deal. As we know, Frontier had their inaugural fight on the 22nd, two days ago. And what people don't realize about that flight is that they're using what's an Airbus A321. This is the largest aircraft we have had. Now, to put it into perspective, this aircraft, if you look at a 757 with first class and business class and economy class, this Airbus product that Frontier has put into our market has more seats than that, 230 seats. And 217 people went out on that first flight. So right out of the gate, they're very happy. So we're growing, and of course, on June 7th, we start our inaugural Chicago flight. But the point is, the airport is growing. We are very close to completing a master plan for the airport, which kind of looks at a 20-year snapshot in increments, five years and 10 years. And not surprisingly, parking is our number-one pinch point. The airfield is great, taxiways, runways, the terminal facility, we can handle what we anticipate future growth being, notwithstanding an anomaly, some worldly growth that we haven't seen, but just on a steady growth pace, gates and ticket counters and baggage claim, pretty good shape. Yes, we could use more facilities on the international side, and we'll work on that. But parking is the pinch point. This project is very significant in that effort in two ways. One, it takes care of an immediate need, because during the peak season, summertime, holidays, we're in overflow condition. We've got to move employees out of a portion of employee lot parking and dedicate that to temporary overflow, long-term parking. So we have an immediate need for that. The second piece is, some point down the road in our master plan will tell us when, and I'm going to guess it's in the four-to-five-year range, and actually could be a little sooner than that, we're going to need a parking garage at the airport. And we're putting together a financial plan for that, and we'll be presenting information to council about what the big picture's going to look like at a later date. But this project is taking up kind of our last eight acres that we have that's reasonably close to the terminal. It will produce 750 additional stalls, and it will do two things. Like I said, take care of immediate need, but when it comes time to build a parking garage at the airport, you're going to lose 300 to 500 stalls during construction. Where do you put those people? So this project accommodates not only the immediate need, but also helps facilitate that larger construction project down the road. So this is a prudent thing to do, we're going to be relocating the cell lot, cellphone waiting lot, expanding that, we're going to be relocating an employee lot, so, and service parking is the least expensive parking we can do. So this is a win-win for the customers. The airlines like it because we're accommodating their customers in a convenient manner. And to me, the most important thing about parking is to not have shuttling. It's a customer inconvenience. It's, when you talk to airports, that's kind of the number-one thing. I don't want to shuttle to a rental car facility, I don't want to shuttle to go get my car that's, you know, a mile away somewhere at a large airport. So we're in a very good position to be able to execute a project like this without going into a shuttling mode, which is very expensive operationally every year, we just don't want to take that hit.
That makes sense. And then, so how long with this item and some of the other items that were in consent today, how long until you do some of this parking expansion? Is this immediate, that we're going to see some immediate?
Yes. So we'll be in design this summer, we'll go to bid near the end of the year, probably just before the holidays, which is a great time to bid projects, by the way, to get contractors lined up before they get real busy next, following spring. The goal is to have this parking lot done and operating by May of next year, one year from now, before the summer season hits.
Well, I think it's fantastic. I think the growth that we're experiencing is really being seen at our parking, at our air terminal. But it's great that you recognize that parking's the pinch point, and you know, you're taking care of the customer, and that's what we want to do as the city of Fresno. So I really do appreciate everything, and kudos on the getting the Airbus in, you know, the biggest plane that serves the city of Fresno now, that's in Frontier. And then, I guess, and Councilman Capriolio has a huge poster back here about the first flight to Chicago, so we're going to have a direct flight to Chicago coming up. So I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve this consent item.
I'll second it with a comment or two. Kevin, thank you so much for all you do for our community. Not only do we have direct flights to Denver, direct flights to Chicago, we have direct flights to three cities in Mexico, non-stop, direct flights, folks. So we're growing, we're hustling, we're bustling, Fresno's on the map. We have everything from Grizzly Fest to an international airport, so everybody should come to Fresno. We're the best city in the state, and we have the most amenities and action and activities, et cetera. And you are a large part of it and your team, Kevin, so I can't thank you enough. And I often say Fresno State is a crown jewel, they got to move over, because you're my crown jewel too, the District Four competition here. So on behalf of District Four and our council, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I will say this, our airport really is, for our community and this region in the Central Valley, it's the gateway to the world. It really, really is. And we have studies that show that people are using our airport. In fact, and I'll end with this, when you, aside from an LAX and an SFO where you do have some people driving, that's for the most part catching direct international flights. If you strip that away and you say, well, how many people are really driving to a Sacramento or a San Jose or an Oakland? It's about only 5% of everybody who flies out of the Central Valley drive to those airports and use those airports, and that's a pretty good utilization rate for our airport. It says a lot about our community and how we value our airport, so I appreciate that.
Councilmember Bretafel.
Yeah, Kevin, I've just, kind of in aside, we talked about, you know, both of our love for flying. Has anything happened since Mazie left, you know, in terms of other flight schools coming to the area?
Mazie's Flight School, actually, it's somewhat alive and well in a different form. The previous owner of Mazie's has taken possession of the aircraft. They are leasing land at the airport on the ramp from one of our FBO, one of our tenants. And so they are operating now as a flight school. They are tied into Reedley College's new program for pilot training, so, which is, there's grants for that and so forth, so they've partnered with them, so we're very happy. In fact, when you drive on the airside and you look at the ramp, you'll see all those same aircraft parked out there today, and they're being used. So it's just in, so they've just kind of morphed into a little different model and tied into the Reedley program. And that's significant because there is nationwide a pilot shortage that the airlines are very concerned about. So we're just on a local level, trying to do our part to mitigate that.
Okay, and you're not aware of other flight schools that want to open up in Fresno?
You know, there's, there is one other flight school on, at FAT, that's doing pretty well. There's one at Chandler that's doing pretty well. So between the two airports, there are three flight schools. We haven't had any inquiries into opening additional ones. I will say this, if somebody were to approach us and say, I want to start a flight school, we have the space at either airport to accommodate them. And that's for us, which is key, we have the ability to accommodate, just like the airlines, these type of private enterprises.
Well, just, what are the two names of those other schools, the one at Chandler and the one in Fresno?
Looking over. Fresno Flyers is over at Chandler, American Helicopters, which is helicopter flight school, is at Chandler, and then, isn't there Pacific Aviation, yeah, over at this airport, and then...
What is the name of it?
Pacific Aviation, I believe they have some capabilities of training RIN aircraft instructors. And then, of course, the former, Jim Brannon.
Right.
Right, so he's alive and well and operating out of FAT right now in concert with Reedley College.
He's the one doing Mazie?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks Kevin.
Thanks.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you. First off, Kevin, great job. I mean, I use the airport, minute he's there, you've done a really great job, not just the operations in the airport, but even the waiting area for folks to get picked up and dropped off. I think that's a great amenity for our airport. I did have two questions, one with regards to, and I love the expansion plans and kind of the long-term vision. So we talk a lot, and I don't think a lot of folks know that we're designated a port of entry airport, and so if you could just kind of briefly explain what that means for the city of Fresno, for the kinds of planes that come in here?
So, okay, we are, we are, we are actually a port of entry in the eyes of Customs and Border Protection, meaning they have staffed the facility here, committed to a full-time staff seven days a week. We've had that in place since 2006. The issue is that we pay their salaries, it's what's called a user fee program, whereas every other airport in the United States that has regularly scheduled commercial international air service, they pay their own salaries. So they charge $17.50 per arriving passenger through the airlines at every airport in this country, but at our airport, we also pay their salary. So we have been actively working with CBP to get out from under that program and into a program that's similar to all the other airports. We've been unsuccessful, this is a political issue, we've engaged our congressional delegation on this. CBP's position is we just don't have the staff, and that's true, I do believe that. But, so we're not giving up on that. But what's more important, isn't so much that. Now, that's about a $750,000 expense to us. We would lower some of our fees for the arriving passengers if we were to get that status, so it is significant to get that status. But what's just as important is resources. Our master plan is going to show that we need to expand our international facilities so we can do simultaneous arrivals, we don't have to have 90-minute separation, essentially double our capacity. Well, to do that, we have to have a commitment.
Kevin, can I just interrupt you for a second? So we need to stay on topic, and I appreciate my council colleagues' questions and the discussion that, you know, folks are trying to have, but it's unrelated to the item. So if we can just kind of wrap up, we do have a motion and a second.
Our master plan is going to show that we need to expand our international facilities so we can do simultaneous arrivals. We don't have to have 90-minute separation, essentially double our capacity. Well, to do that, we have to have a commitment.
Kevin?
Yes.
Can I just interrupt you for a second? So we need to stay on topic, and I appreciate my council colleagues' questions and the discussion that, you know, folks are trying to have, but it's unrelated to the item. So if we can just kind of wrap up. We do have a motion and a second.
Well, it kind of does talk a little bit about the expansion and the long-term vision. And I think Kevin just kind of went a little bit over because I didn't say brief loud enough. But just one, one last question with regards to the, to the capacity of our runway. Do you feel that the runway that we have now can accommodate these big cargo ships that would, cargo planes that would come in, i.e. the commerce, e-commerce capacity that we have here in the Central Valley?
Yeah, absolutely. Our, our capacity on the airfield is, is, is not an issue whatsoever.
Got it. And I'll, I'll make sure to mention the word brief.
Brief.
More loudly. Thank you.
Thank you. So there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none. The motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Next item that was pulled was item 1G. This is Department of Public Utilities to approve a cooperative purchase agreement in the amount of $112,960.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike from Public Utilities.
Yeah, good morning, Mike. So I had a couple of questions on this, and maybe you can help me with it. So the, this is about tracking vehicles, is that right?
Right. It's vehicle location services.
Vehicle location. So what I would like to know is what vehicles, and then the cost, it seems very expensive to me per vehicle. And then the uses of the tracking, and then the availability, who is this information going to be available to?
So it's currently utilized by the Water Division, the Code Enforcement Division, and, and Wastewater Division. So three divisions sharing the cost of these, these services. So not to exceed $112,960 a year. And the, the usage is for dispatching of employees out in the field, reducing response time, route planning, that sort of thing.
So it's more to be used for planning routes and stuff like that rather than checking up on employees?
Right. So not specifically used for that purpose. The priority is to, for efficiencies in, in how we route staff out in the field, understanding where they're at, responding to requests for services, and being able to identify those employees who are out in the field and get them to that need for service as quick as possible.
Okay. So it's more of an internal need then, right? For, for planning process for each of those three departments. And then, what, could you go over the cost with me a little bit on this?
Right. So the cost consists of, of two things. One, it's, there's a, a monthly service fee for each vehicle, and that's $21.50 a month. And in addition to that, there are some hardware charges. So each vehicle has to have the hardware located in it for, for the tracking system to work. And as vehicles are added...
So that's a one-time upfront cost to equip the vehicle with the hardware?
Well, it's generally a one-time, but we've been utilizing the service for the last 10 years or so. So as, so sometimes those, that equipment needs to be replaced as it wears out, becomes defective. As we add new vehicles to the fleet, we need to switch it over or we need to add, add some new equipment. So there are charges for that, for the hardware as well.
And then the monthly charge, is that where technology's at these days? It's, it's still, it would be $21 a month per vehicle?
Right.
But there's no cheaper way of doing that?
Actually, the cost of this service by, through the cooperative agreement, it's actually going down per year. So it's actually a savings through this agreement.
And then, would this, would this be used, would, would there be a secondary use to follow, you know, to know where the employee's at, at all times?
And we've had vehicles that are stolen, and we, we've been able to track them down. If there was, you know, a complaint that came in that maybe a vehicle was involved in an accident or something, there's history there that we can go back and look at and just check and see where the vehicle was at that period of time. So, yeah, it could also be utilized in that case. But that's not the, that's not the priority usage. It's for efficiencies in, in how we dispatch staff.
Okay. And then finally, it'd be available to, then to the department heads and to the departments themselves, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
So there's a motion, a second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Oh, I think we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. So there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Next, we have item 1J, which is the Parks Department.
All right. I think my colleagues are getting tired of me talking. So one, oh yeah, Parvin. So what I'm interested here is this, I didn't seem very specific unless myself, my staff didn't see it inside of the staff report. Which sites are you talking about that in, in the city of Fresno? Which parks would be scheduled for equipment with this item?
Sorry about them little horse today. So sorry. Orchid Park right now, and also Fink White Park.
So two parks?
Yes.
So it is Orchid, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. And so two parks are going to be beneficiary of this playground equipment, which, which we're voting on today?
Absolutely.
All right. Well, I've got my colleague here that wants me to be really brief. So I'll, thank you, Parvin, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Brandau, and a second by Councilmember Capriolio. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. There is a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 5-0 with Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Baines absent. Before I move on to the next item, I do want to recognize, I know we have a few students, 11 students that came in from Central High School, which is out in my district. They are here with their American Government class, so we want to welcome you. Thank you for being here and visiting and getting an opportunity to see the type of business that the council takes care of every other Thursday. So welcome. Next, we'll go on to item, excuse me, to actually, we have a 10:00 AM hearing by Darm. 10:00 AM, number one hearing to consider annexation application number ANX 17004.
Good morning, Council President Soria, council members. Chris Lang from Development Resource Management Department. There are no changes to the staff report or recommendation at this time, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. And we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? If you can state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Madam President, Bill Robinson, Soul Development Associates. I'm here representing the property owner and the developer for this project. It's seven acres located on East Luvial Avenue, North Side, just this side of Willow. Willow happens to be the city boundary with Clovis. There are three applications, plus the environmental assessment before you. The environmental assessment is a finding of conformity. The annexation application is for seven acres. The project is surrounded on three sides by city, and it'll actually round off the boundaries, or square off the boundaries, rather. Also before you is a rezone application. Currently, the product, the property's in the county, and it's R3, excuse me, or rural residential. It'll be rezoned to, five acres will be rezoned to R3, excuse me, RS3, and the other parcel will be rezoned to RS, RM1, which is a, a very low-density multifamily density. Also is a CUP, and the CUP is for a three-phase, 58,000 square foot care facility, residential care facility. And it's for those who have chosen not to or can no longer take care of themselves their housing needs. Unfortunately, 10,000 people turn 65 every day in the United States, and this type of facility is in great need. So therefore, on behalf of the applicant, which is Valley Regional Home Health, and the property owner, which is the Carrion Trust, we respectfully request that you approve the, adopt the environmental finding and approve the annexation application, rezone application, and the conditional use permit for this project. And I can remain for any questions that you may have. I was short, wasn't I?
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. So next, we'll go out, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Bretafell?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Bretafell, and a second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 6, no, 5-0 with Councilmember Baines and Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we'll go on to the 10:00 AM, number two hearing. This is a hearing to consider the official plan line for the West Shaw Avenue alignment from North Polk Avenue to North Grantland. This is in the area of District One and District Two.
Thank you, council members. Good morning. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. Here with, asking your approval for an official plan line for Shaw Avenue. This is from Polk to Grantland. The plan line does allow for a design with four travel lanes and a median island through the entire length, also bike lanes and dual-left turns at several intersections, including Polk and Veterans. We did hold a public meeting at Inspiration Park on March 23rd, 21st. We had a large turnout. We did not hear a lot of opposition to the plans. The group looked at, at the OPL very closely. There were questions, but not a lot of opposition. Primarily, we heard that traffic is heavy, and there was an interest in seeing the work done sooner more than later. But this OPL is a little different to some of the others. There's not a lot of impacts to existing homes. So I, I think in, in general, we had a lot of support. We do have some of the details of the OPL, if you'd like to look at them. We do have them on a, the computer. We could bring them up if there's any questions.
Great. Thank you, Andy. And we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais. Andy, I did have, just wanted to follow up on your comments because this does impact District One. So you did mention that there were a number of folks that attended the meeting. And you also mentioned that these OPL lines are not going to really impact the, like, property of folks? Like, any taking or anything like that?
There's no homes that would be impacted directly. There's some front yards. A lot of the property is owned by investors already. We did have a few homeowners there with questions. But we also had, I think we probably had over 50 people at the meeting. So we were pleased with the turnout.
So for those residential property owners, I remember, I recall having a similar hearing for District Five, right? Where we did have one homeowner that his front yard would be significantly impacted. We don't see any of that with these OPL lines. Just wanted to make sure and put it on the record.
We did have some properties that, that would be impacted when the, the street is built out. But at the Planning Commission, we had no opposition, and we didn't have a lot of opposition either at the public meeting.
So maybe, could you show the, the map? And does it show how much of the homes it would be taking, some of those impacted? Do you know about how many homes, Andy, are impacted?
No, I don't, but...
And those folks received, and those folks received notice?
They did.
Did any of those show up to that meeting?
They did show up to the public meeting. They did not show up for the Planning Commission meeting.
So they did show up to the public meeting?
They did. And they ask a lot of questions. This kind of shows some of the homes. One of the differences may be that these tend to be larger parcels than the ones along Temperance.
Okay, so...
So the homes are either set back further, or they're already owned by investors who are hoping to develop the property. But there are also some homes that have home, that are occupied by landowners.
So, and those that are occupied by landowners, the, the impact, the house is set back far enough that the taking or the change in lines would be okay?
There's no full takes where the home itself is in the way, but there are some yards that are impacted, yards.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that it's not as significant. You remember the ones that we saw off of Temperance, how the line would end up essentially like five or 10 feet away from the front door? Do we have any of that?
Well, you can, can see, there, there are homes that, but they tend to be set back a little further. Parcels tend to be larger. There's probably three or four that are, are close. You can see those on the right side of the screen. All the way to the left, you see the house with the red roof. You can see their, their yard would be impacted. So there are impacts anytime a road is widened. But the homes tend to be set back further than those in some of the other OPLs.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate the response. Councilmember Brandau, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, so, you know, I do have a little bit of concern here, but, but Council President, you know, following this, so we had a couple, we had three people connect with us before the meeting, but I think they went to the community meeting and they, they didn't follow up. So I, I'm hoping that their concerns were met at the meeting. That's, that seems to be the case. But I will probably personally follow up with a few of these folks to make sure they're copacetic with, with the plan. But, but beyond that, I definitely, and I know you agree, Council President, that this area of, west of 99 on Shaw definitely needs, needs the type of work that you guys are doing. So I'm ver, I'm going to be very supportive of it. So, but, but my question of it, Andrew, Andrew, is what is the timeline now? When will, is there more opportunity for people to hear about this and understand it going forward?
Well, this will, this will be the approval of the plan line. This doesn't start the construction. So as we start going into construction, most of it will be related to development. We have some subdivisions already planned on Shaw. So those homeowners will have the opportunity to come and speak at those hearings also. But no, we are not planning additional community meetings for this plan line.
So, Council President, unlike, unlike the situation that we saw in Councilmember Chavez's district when we had to, and expand the width of Temperance, I think, I think that the planning's met with the folks. I, I'm still not, I'm not getting any negative feedback from any of the residents at this point. So I, I think we're, I, I'm going to be supportive of this today.
Okay. Great. I just wanted to make sure, and I'm glad that you guys at least did meet with those that would be impacted. So if they didn't, they haven't contacted our office, you know, I'm going to go ahead and support now, and then if anything comes up, I will definitely connect with your guys' office.
We had, at the meeting, we had strip maps similar to the one that you see here, but just one long strip. We identified each property with an address and an, and an accessory's parcel number. And as homeowners approached us, we helped them locate their home, show them what would incur, what would be the improvements in front of their home. They seemed, most of them seemed to understand. We had questions, you know, about the water delivery to their home, would it be impacted? Where there would be signals, some just general questions. But we didn't seem to get a lot of opposition or concern about how it would impact their homes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Brandau. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. So before we move on to our next hearing, we'll go back to our 9:45 scheduled, scheduled presentation by Mayor Lee Brand and Councilmember Oliver Baines.
As a fellow Roosevelt High School alumni, it's an absolute honor to welcome Audra McDonald back to Fresno to celebrate her great career. And, feeling better? Audra McDonald is the only person to win six Tony Awards and the only one to win all four major acting awards on Broadway. And she, oh, I can't hold that. And she truly has the voice of an angel. Fresno has followed Audra's accomplishments with pride, not only in the performing arts, but also her passion for equal rights and at-risk youth. Her talent and her heart have consistently challenged the status quo. Audra McDonald... Audra McDonald is truly an inspiration on the stage and off the stage. And this Saturday, Fresno Unified and my administration will host a special ceremony at Roosevelt High School. Yea, go Rough Riders! Where they will name the theater in her honor. I'm going to present Audra with a key to the city. And we're also going to honorably name the section of M Street in front of Saroyan Theater, the Audra McDonald Way. So Council and I will officially designate Saturday, May 26th, as Audra McDonald Day in the City of Fresno. Give him a hand.
You know, it's a real pleasure to honor Audra McDonald as a Fresno Unified student. And I would just like to say, you know, Fresno Unified produces excellent students regardless of the kinds of things that we hear. All you have to do is look across the United States and you will see Edison High School graduates. And at one time, the City of Fresno was full of Edison High School graduates. And now we have one that's internationally known, Audra McDonald. And I would really, I really appreciate the city recognizing a name and a street after her. Thank you.
Oliver?
Thank you. Listen, first of all, I want to apologize for being tardy. I had some, some difficulties this morning. But I, I, I join in with Mayor Brand and Trustee Johnson in really memorializing what type of moment this is. Audra McDonald, the world over. I mean, while we're proud of her in Fresno, Audra McDonald is an international star. And the very smallest thing we could do was name a street after her, but she deserves so much more from the city. So glad the mayor's going to be presenting her the key to the city. We're going to do everything we can to acknowledge her. I believe, if I have it right, she, she won three Tonys before she was even 30. And with a to, with a total of six overall. I believe she's won two Emmys, a Grammy Award. She received the President's National Freedom of the Art, National Medal of the Arts. I mean, so we are talking about one of the most decorated people walking the planet Earth right now when it comes to the arts. So it is, it is our deep, deep pleasure and honor to be able to name Audra McDonald Way after her in the City of Fresno.
Thank you, Council.
You know, I'm, I, we don't do this very often, so I'm wondering how this works. I think we, we have to actually take a council action. So I'm probably going to have us go back, let, go back up to the dais now. We'll come out to the public and allow the public to make some comments. And we'll have a couple of pictures before we do that.
Councilmember Baines, so you presenting a resolution for the council to adopt?
So, Council, I know we don't do this, get the opportunity to do this very often, but we are going to name a street after Audra McDonald in downtown Fresno right in front of the Saroyan Theater. So in order to do this, is my understanding, we have to take a council action. We now probably would go out to the public and allow the public to make any comments on the record. And, and after that, then we bring it back to the dais and allow councilmembers to weigh in and take an official, official action.
Great. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please comment up. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Esther Korea. I was born here in Fresno, California. I also, I'm proud that I went to Lincoln High, Lincoln Elementary. And from seventh grade to eleventh, I was at Edison High. And I was in the choir also. We had Hillard Streets and a bunch of other Jimmy Sandoval. And we had the best choir in Fresno, California, from Edison High. And I was proud to be in the choir also. But I really am happy that, and I also, I, I, my mother got, my, my mother's sister got sick, so she went over to Calhoun to take care of her. And so we had to move. And therefore, I graduated from Roosevelt High. So both of them, but I count Edison as my school because I was there so, so long with, anyway. So yeah, I'm very proud. And I'm very happy that you finally did something for our community. Thank you. And people of color. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? CNN, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Chavez.
I just want to thank Councilmember Baines for your leadership on this. I know it's been, it's been a long time coming, this conversation that we had. And I also want to thank my former colleague, Trustee Johnson. I know that he played a big role in, in what they're doing over at Roosevelt. Now it will be the Audra McDonald Theater there at Roosevelt. I think Saturday's the ceremony. But I just wanted to probably thank you guys for the work. And, you know, I'll, I'll say this because I was talking to my fellow Rough Rider, Paul Capriola. There's three of us at City Hall now with the mayor, Councilmember Capriolio, class of 18 still, right? But 19, 18?
18, 18.
97 and 66. Or 64? Okay. But just want to say thank you, Councilmember Baines, for your leadership on this.
I join in that, Councilmember Baines. You are a great leader in this community. And unfortunately, we'll miss you in about seven months. But finish strong, my friend, just like you're doing. We appreciate you and what you do.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. And I, I hesitated to mention when we were down there that Audra McDonald, for most of us, we probably know this, but she's going to be performing at the Saroyan Theater this Saturday. So it's sold out, so if you didn't get your ticket already...
Too bad, so sad.
Too bad, too bad, so sad. But we're awfully honored to have her come back and perform in her hometown. So that is what's, if people were wondering why we were doing it this week, it's because she's going to be here. And we plan to present everything to her on Saturday, like, like the mayor said. And before I make the motion, I want to just, and I'm looking in the room, oh yeah, I need to really thank Mark Sandruff. So as with everything that goes on in, in this building, there's always incredible staff behind the scenes that, that make everything work. And Mark, your work on this, my friend, thank you very much for, for pulling it all together, getting it all done. Mark really, on the City Hall side, deserves all of the credit for, for making this happen. So thank you, my friend. I appreciate it. And with that, I happily make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
So there's the motion by Councilmember Baines, a second by Councilmember Chavez, and a third by Councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition? CNN, the motion carries six zero with Councilmember Brandau absent. Next, we're going to go, before I have, I know the mayor's still here because he's going to be doing the presentation of the budget. I did want to call up Ms. Mary Korea. She had scheduled time at 10:15. So Mrs. Korea, if you want to come on up, state your name for the record, you will have three minutes.
Again, my name is Mary Esther Korea. Happy to be here again. Buenos dias. Good morning and aloha. Okay, I have something because my, the smog is not good for me. But I have to run away from Hawaii because it's bad over there. Okay. I was here in Fresno from Jan, well, actually, first, I was here nine months last year, 2017. I'm here in Fresno from Jan, I came back from, to, I was here in January till middle of March, and then I had to go home. And I, I'm back here again. I, I was gone for two months and I'm here again and fighting for my rights. I got a bill from the Water and Sewer Department for $500 within those two months. And I sent, they said if I didn't pay it, I was, they were going to turn my water off. But I knew I had to come back today. I mean, this month. I've been here already. And so I sent 150 one week, 150 the other week. And then when I came back to Fresno, I paid another $100. And now they tell me that I owe another $100. And nobody was here. I'm not renting my property because the code enforcement is always on my back and they're suing me for $16,000. I'm going to have to fight that. I'm fighting that. But I decided not to rent the, the unit. And it's been over a year that no money, no, actually, a year and a half, no money and no rent and no nothing. All I do is come and fix and fix and fix. Well, I'm not renting my places. I'm not renting them at all because I don't want to be on a rich hunt again still. And they're still finding me. I came back because now they want to find me another $2,000. This is crazy. The code enforcement doesn't care because they think I'm, I'm a disabled senior citizen and an educator. But I have to fight for my rights and I'm going to keep on because this is not fair. This is violating my civil rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the budget presentation, I did just want to finish out the 10:10 AM hearing. Hopefully, it should be quick. This one is a hearing by DARM to consider adoption of resolution related to the designation of properties to the local register of historic resources.
Good morning, Madam Council President, members of the council, Dan Zach, Assistant Director with the DARM Department. And I just wanted to come up quickly to introduce Laura Groves Van Ona, our new Historic Preservation Specialist. She joined us in January and has really hit the ground running and is doing an excellent job. And we're really lucky to have her. This is her first time presenting her to you, so I wanted to introduce you to the fresh new face. And Laura, go ahead and take it away.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm here today to present two nominations for listing in the local register of historic resources that have been requested by the respective property owners. And they have been found eligible at a public hearing by the Historic Preservation Commission and have been forwarded to you for consideration of approval. I have a couple of images that were submitted. It was a PDF. There you go. Thank you.
In the interim, I'd make a motion to approve.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Capriolio and a second by Councilmember Chavez. So that's one of the properties.
Would you like me to present them?
If you want to just go ahead and show the pictures, we already have a motion and a second. I think councilmembers will punch up if they have any questions. So why don't we go out to the public? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on these items? CNN, we'll bring it back to the dais. So there's a motion and a second. Looks like no one else has punched up. Any opposition?
I did.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next, we'll go to the special presentation of the mayor's fiscal year 2018-2019 budget.
This is your, an overview, 30,000 altitude cruising, buckle your seatbelts. And you've already got your budget packets. We'll go in detail over the next coming weeks to go over things in detail. So this is not only a budget for the coming fiscal year, it's a long-term budget that charts the path to prosperity for the City of Fresno. And today, I'm pleased to present a budget of $1.115 billion for fiscal year 2019. That includes $341 million in the general fund. This budget is sensible, balanced, and provides a roadmap to make Fresno a better, safer, and more prosperous place to live, work, and play. It also focuses on four key initiatives: economic development, public safety, quality of life improvements, and prudent fiscal management. And the first key initiative of economic development is the engine that drives the other three. And my vision for Fresno, I say it often, is to transform our economy by creating citywide prosperity that will improve the quality of life for everyone in Fresno. For decades, we've dealt with the burden of generational poverty, high unemployment, high crime rate. And we can change that now, over time. At the State of the City address last June, I announced my goal of creating 10,000 new jobs in my term in office. In 17 months, we have created 4,000 new jobs with Ulta, Amazon, and the Gap E-Commerce Centers. Achieving these goals require a commitment of city resources. That's infrastructure, water, sewer, freeway connections at North Avenue, Central Avenue, and financial incentives. A successful building of e-commerce centers and manufacturing plants in the South Fresno industrial triangle will create thousands of new jobs. Will also significantly elevate our economic tax base. Substantial increases in our economic tax base will provide the funding needed to hire more police officers and firefighters, fight blight and homelessness, rebuild our roads and other infrastructure, and improve and build parks and park, and trails. And this is from last year. I know Paul knows this one well. My formula for success is more jobs equal reduction in families in poverty. More jobs mean more revenue. More revenue means better service. And better services mean a better quality of life. This is the roadmap to building a better Fresno with a better quality of life for all of our citizens. And I'm here to assure the people of Fresno that the city is in sound financial conditions. We are restoring our core services to pre-recession levels. We're steadily building a 10% reserve. In fact, we'll be at $27.5 million on this budget alone. And we're maintaining an A-plus credit rating and also maintaining a fully funded pension system, only one of a handful in the entire United States. We are, however, still short of sufficient revenues to expand our core services until we see the impact of new jobs created by Ulta, Amazon, the Gap, and others. Service levels for core services like public safety, parks, and public works are plateaued at current levels in this year's budget. And historically, Fresno has never generated sufficient revenues to fully fund its essential core services. In large part, this is because we have one of the highest poverty levels at 30% of any city in the United States. And that holds us back and reduces our per capita income to less than half of many cities in our state. There are cities in Southern California and Northern California with half our population with a bigger general fund. That's our handicap. That's the long-term goal we've got to do. My administration will not accept budgetary caretaker status. I will always set the bar high for our citizens. I will continue to focus on economic development and job creation to lift this city out of poverty, increase our overall prosperity, and fully fund essential services. I will also continue to look for innovative and new revenue streams to fund our core services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Mayor. Thank you, thank you for that quick overview. I know yesterday, we got the booklet for the, for the budget. And I'm looking at the calendar for each department that, that we're going to have presentations on. So just for the sake of conversation and to help the council and the administration out under the umbrella of homelessness and, and how we're going to go about tackling that, are we going to discuss it under the, the Police Department or Public Utilities? Because I know when we have the task force, it's really a collaborative approach. So for the sake of conversation, just kind of want to get some, some feedback.
I think we're open to, you know, talking about it under either of those departments or also general city purpose. So however you want to tackle it, we're open and we'll be ready.
And by the way, our, our homeless task force for the council district have been doing, just doing an amazing job. And I just want to make sure that, that they have the resources that they need going forward. Thank you.
Great. City manager? Do you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the mayor and all of our department directors for your leadership. It's an honor to work along your, by your side. But I wanted to give a special thanks to Henry Fiero and his team. Can you guys all stand up, please? You are all amazing. You have put in hours and hours and hours of work. You all even got your... You have put in hours and hours and hours of work. You all even got your line item detail yesterday. So I would like to give them all a round of applause. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Brenda.
So I was gonna maybe ask the city attorney, but Doug, could you remind me about the council's budget analyst? And is that individual now in place and available? Okay.
Yes, Wayne Padilla, he's here attending right at the desk.
Okay. And so I definitely would love to schedule a meeting with you soon, and then maybe a couple times throughout the budget process if necessary. So I just wanted to let the citizens know that council also has a budget analyst, and we take it very seriously. So thank you, and we'll schedule a meeting soon. Thank you, Doug.
Great. I think that is all the council members that are punched up. Excuse me. So I just will say very briefly, thank you, Mayor, for the presentation. We look forward to, as the council looks forward to, having a robust discussion over the next few weeks as we look in detail as to what your proposal is and also hear from the residents of the city in terms of what they see in the budget and, you know, if they support or if they have any questions or concerns. So I'm looking forward to hearing from residents in District One. We will be having community meetings to engage them and hear their feedback. Thank you, and thank you to your staff for providing us the information. We don't need to go to the public on this. Great. Next, we will go to the 10:30 a.m. number two hearing. This is a presentation by our Public Works Department. It's a PG&E energy update and opportunities.
You know, I just wanted to let you all know that during budget discussions last year, a lot of questions were coming up based upon what are we doing to, for energy efficiency, citywide, et cetera. So after I became City Manager, we started meeting quarterly with PG&E. I've become quite close with Isaiah S. and Erica and Ann, who was in the audience. I don't see her right now. But in any event, I thought the workshop would be good timing before we start budget discussions, just to let you know everything that we have done, what we're doing, and what we plan on doing. So, thank you.
Good morning, council. We're working on the PowerPoint. The presentation was in the agenda packets, but we're working on getting that on screen right now. We just became aware that was not there. But wanna go ahead and just highlight this. As our City Manager mentioned, PG&E's team has been wonderful to work with. They've both completed past projects and also been working with the city leadership team, various department heads on opportunities for the city. One I'm particularly excited about that PG&E will talk about is a citywide streetlight LED retrofit with over 35,000 streetlights, tremendous energy savings opportunities, and a way to fund that that's very beneficial to the city of Fresno. With that, I want to recognize, both introduce to you Isaiah Franco, who's here to make the presentation from PG&E, and also extend appreciations to both Ann Cluse and Erica Cabrera, as well as Brent Patera from the PG&E team, who've done lots and lots of great work on that. The LED streetlight item, again, is not before you today as an action item, but we'll be presenting both an on-bill finance loan agreement as well as the agreement with PG&E to get that done on June 14th. So that'll be coming before you. But with that, I want to introduce Isaiah Franco. Thank him for being here.
Good morning, council members. My name is Isaiah Franco. I'm the Strategic Account Manager for PG&E Fresno Office. It's an honor to be here. I'm excited to share some information with you about past projects, current projects, and where we're heading from here. So should I wait?
Can you, is there any way that you can continue with the presentation?
We do have the presentation available to us. Yeah.
Absolutely. Fantastic. Great. I'm gonna start just to highlight two key components that makes city of Fresno one of our biggest city and our number one city in PG&E territory. City of Fresno has 1,854 electric accounts and 88 gas accounts, and as I mentioned, makes the city of Fresno the number one with most accounts, usage both electric and gas, and revenue in PG&E territory. Just last year, in 2017, towards the end of the year, working very close with Mr. Bruce Rudd at the time, he was instrumental in supporting and giving us the opportunity to retrofit three parking garages in the city of Fresno. You have the address on that page. The first one is located on 1077 Van Ness Avenue, 2020 Merced Street, and 801 Van Ness Avenue. We're very proud to share with you that actually the savings that we had originally identified, we're exceeding those savings by additional 10%. Making each facility averaging anywhere from 43% annual savings up to 57% savings of the current bill. Right now, we identified a little over $74,000 in the last six months. And the next page, you're gonna find, I went and compiled the first six months prior to the lighting retrofit, and then the most current six months after the project completed. And you'll see that each parking garage has had tremendous savings. And this is again just for the first six months. On 1077 Van Ness, we have identified a savings of $46,000. 2020 Merced Street, savings of a little over $3,000 in six months. And 801 Van Ness, savings of $25,000. All total, just under $75,000 for the last six months. The next two pages I'm gonna highlight are projects currently underway. One that I want the city to be aware of is that the city of Fresno is making history along with PG&E. This is on the construction of the, what we call the urban water supply system for your new water plant. The fact that the city of Fresno made the most smart decision on bringing water to the plant is by building a pipeline. By doing that, the city of Fresno actually will save over 17 million kilowatt-hours by building the pipeline, which converts about just under $3 million in cost savings. And this is the one that I am very proud to share with you and be part of. Let's see. There you go. Is that the city of Fresno, once the project comes online officially, online in their system, PG&E will be bringing a rebate check of $1.6 million to the city of Fresno. So I really wanna commend the city and council members for approving this project because definitely it's a commitment on making and building facilities that are the most efficient in the industry. This project right now is completed, is scheduled to be completed August of this year. I would like to take this opportunity to identify two key players within the city of Fresno, and that's Mr. Glenn Knapp and Randy Hoffman. They have been instrumental, working very close with myself and my team. The next slide is the one that Mr. Scott Moser mentioned to you, that we're in the process of retrofitting over $35,000 streetlights with the city of Fresno. By doing this, the city of Fresno is scheduled to have estimated savings, annual savings, which is under 10 million kilowatt-hours. That converts to annual savings, cost savings of $1.6 million a year, with an estimated project cost of $10.2 million. And the best part of this project is the fact that PG&E is bringing an opportunity to finance this project at 0% interest on their program called OBF, that stands for on-bill financing. If the city decides to move forward, we estimate it to complete this project in June 2019. The city of Fresno has been working very close with myself, Ann Cluse, and Erica Cabrera. And I would like to recognize Scott Moser, Mr. Robert Anderson, and his team, and also a big shout out to my colleague Ann Cluse. She has been instrumental in keeping us all focused on getting this project on target. We also have two potential projects that we just completed during a very detailed energy analysis for two facilities. It includes the City Hall and the MSC facilities. We are working very close with Robin O'Malley in that department. And the next facility is the Fax and Handy Ride facilities, which we are working very close with Mr. Jim Shaw. For the City Hall and MSC facilities, this involves the City Hall and nine buildings. We estimate a utility savings of over $165,000 annually. That if we move forward with this project in a 15-year period, the city is looking at saving about over $3 million. And in a 25-year period, just under $7 million. This one, we just put in some final numbers, and we're gonna be presenting this report to Robin this coming Friday, the 25th. The next project is working with Mr. Jim Shaw at the Fax and Handy Ride facilities. We estimate a cost savings of just under $72,000 annually. They will have estimated savings in 15 years of $1.4 million, and also in 25 years of $4 million. That includes at both facilities to replace your current solar system and put in a more effective, cost-effective system, state-of-the-art with controls that you'll be able to actually monitor your consumption much better than you've done in the past. And last but not least, right now, we're in the process of working very close with Wilma and her team, along with the directors. We're gonna put together a three- to five-year strategic plan for the city of Fresno. We're gonna be looking at all your facilities, and we're looking at hosting a energy meeting with city department directors in mid or early June. But we're gonna identify your biggest facilities with the biggest usage, identify energy efficiency opportunities in lighting, mechanical, heating and cooling, controls, building envelope, and obviously solar opportunities. We're gonna complete a rate analysis for all 1900 accounts you have in place. And also, I'm working very diligently in bringing a on-bill financing credit line so we can then finance future projects. With that, I'll leave it for any questions you may have.
Perfect. Thank you for that wonderful presentation. And I also just wanna thank the City Manager. I know that I was one of the ones that had asked about this. And I think that as we see, you know, a year later in terms of looking at the opportunities that exist here within our own public facilities, that there's a lot of opportunity to have cost savings.
Absolutely.
And when we have cost savings, that means that we have, you know, maybe a couple extra dollars to be able to prioritize and fund other things, which I am very impressed. And so I'm excited about the opportunities that we have in front of us. I do have a couple of questions. One, when looking at the slide for City Hall and the MSC facilities, in terms of solar, are we just talking about parking lot, solar on the parking lot, or rooftop?
Actually, we identify right now as a potential opportunity at the back, where you have your parking area. That's what we're looking at to build.
The side?
I'm sorry, that side. Yeah.
And what about this other side?
Right now, looking at what we currently have on our system, it will be more cost-effective to have it on that side. But we're looking at both options to see what will be the best cost-effective and better savings for the city.
Okay. Perfect. Well, I'm excited about the opportunities. Again, thank you so much. The only other question I guess I have for our City Manager, as we're looking at some of the potential cost savings, are those at all reflected within this year's budget? Or is that more next year's budget?
Currently, no. There's nothing in there currently because we don't want to be speculative about what kind of savings might be achieved, because a lot of these projects haven't yet been approved by the council. And so we didn't want to assume any kind of savings within the budget.
So there could be potential, though, if we move, if this council moves forward, some of the potential projects outlined, we could see some cost savings.
Potentially, although there is a timing issue, considering how long it would take to build a project and then to actually start seeing the savings in the door. So I don't know whether it would be in the 19 fiscal year or if it would be in the following fiscal year.
Perfect. But at least we know that we will see it in the very near future if this council decides to invest in these types of energy-saving projects. I'm excited about it.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you for that presentation. And I think the administration, especially thank Ann Cluse. Sorry about bugging you about this over and over. And I want to apologize in advance to Erica. I'm gonna be bugging you over and over about this. But I think it's a great opportunity to not just, you know, it's not just the cost savings aspect of it. I think for those of us that represent the older neighborhoods, we have some streets that only have one streetlight. And so I know when we make things brighter, it's safer, and people have a sense of security. So I'm really looking forward, and I'm hoping that the council adopts this, and look forward to working with PG&E and with the administration on going about installing this citywide. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you very much. We're talking about possibly approving this. There's absolutely no way we cannot approve this. The savings, the partnership, the teamwork over the years has been fantastic, and I appreciate that from you and Erica. And I wanted to ask Ann to come up just for a minute. We're gonna go down memory lane a little bit here, Ann. So I can remember four years ago, five years ago?
Yeah, five years ago, first meeting where you called me on the carpet about this.
Yeah, the microphone has to be.
Yes, it was about four years ago, our first official meeting five years ago, when you started calling me on the carpet about it.
Well, that carpet is fantastic, because look how far we've come. And I recall that at that time, LED lights were so new and innovative that we didn't have a lot of information on it. However, you went ahead and your team and lit up, if you will, Eldorado Park as a pilot program. And residents were so appreciative of that. And as Councilmember Chavez said, more lights, less crime. And you did a fantastic job there.
And I appreciate that. And, you know, I have had a few of you ask me questions about, you know, what does the delay really mean? But I have to be honest with you. The best time to do this right now is now, because the fixtures have improved in quality. What we're proposing is gonna be, you know, you'll hear the details in the briefing as we come forward, but now really is the best time because of the quality of the fixtures, the warranty is over 10 years. Isaiah S. and I worked some magic to get the 0% financing. And like I said, the cost of the project has come down so significantly that the fact that, you know, we've been working on this as long as we have, it's okay, because now really is the best time. So I commend city staff because they have really been cracking the whip to get this thing moving.
I only have one other comment. As you and I have talked, I've done 567 streetlights myself in all districts, all my colleagues. And so I guess you're gonna put me out of business, so.
Yeah, that was part of my inspiration, to be honest with you, to get you out of that bucket truck. So I thought, we need a warranty that goes far beyond his term.
Well, I appreciate that. But as the transition continues, I'm still gonna go do my bucket work and get up there 35 feet and help all the residents of Fresno. But fantastic. It was a difficult vote on the surface water treatment plant, but as this partnership evolves and continues, it's only gonna be better, better, better for the community. So I really, really appreciate so much of that. Erica, you're sitting down back there. You should probably come up and get a little credit, too, you know? Come on, Erica.
Oh, she'll be up here. Don't worry.
And thank you for all you've done for us. And if you have a comment or two, we're more than welcome it.
I'm just excited about the opportunity. You know, it's been a transition between Ann and myself taking over that relationship. And so I just look forward to working with Isaiah S. and Wilma and the administration on this project.
Thank you. And I'm not gonna call you on the carpet. Ann's pretty much done the carpet thing, so. We're solid. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. I don't think there's any further questions, assuming that we will be seeing in the coming weeks and months, these action items that the council will have to take regarding some of these projects. So again, thank you, Isaiah S., for your presentation.
Absolutely. And then just one clarification, that $1.6 million for the water plant project, that is coming. So that is for sure.
Great. Thank you so much. Great. So we'll move on with our agenda to the 10:45 a.m. hearing. This is DARM, Resolution Adopting the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan. And I did just want to make a special announcement. If there are folks that need translation, we do have translation available.
Thank you, council members. My name is Kelly Furtado with DARM, Assistant Director, and this morning I will be presenting for the Housing and Community Development Division, the 2018-19 Annual Action Plan. Much of this information and the details are included in your staff packet, along with the draft or the annual action plan itself. So happy to get into the details as you have questions or comments, and I want to just very briefly go over some highlights. There is a PowerPoint included in the staff report. I will not be bringing it up today unless the council so desires that we discuss it in greater detail. The entitlement this year was $11.1 million in entitlement funding. This comes from HUD's CPD, Community Planning and Development Office. It does represent an increase this year over last year's entitlement amount to the tune of about $1.5 million. So this entitlement amount, plus our program income that we are required to rebudget in, plus some prior year reprogramming, is evident in about $14 million that is included in the 18-19 Annual Action Plan in front of you for approval today. Just want to briefly mention that this is work focused on the housing and community development needs of low and moderate-income households. Wanted to just quickly tie in some comments about the delay in the funding announcement again this year. This is our second consecutive year that this has happened, and the omnibus bill was only signed into law on the 23rd of March, which delayed HUD's announcement of our funds until May 1st of this year. So while we typically have a deadline of May 15th to have this approved and into HUD, we are beyond that deadline right now, but it's been extended by HUD, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware that it was extended by HUD so that we are still on time. So the city is not in default of our timeliness as far as turning this in. But again, it was delayed by the federal budget announcement and then the allocations. And once we do turn in this plan to HUD, they will have up to 45 days to approve it and get us back the information that we need to enter into our agreements and our awards. So staff is recommending approval today because we want to speed that process up. We don't want to wait much longer to do this. We are hoping to have as many of these programs implemented in July as possible so that the delay in the announcement of the budget may not have a huge impact and delay us being able to implement these programs. Our staff in that regard has already started working on the projects and activities outlined in this proposal. They've already began with the environmental assessment paperwork and drafting all of the subrecipient and other agreements. They are just in draft format, of course, pending approval by this body and then HUD's approval, but we are trying to get as far ahead of all the paperwork and the documentation this year as possible. So again, our nonprofit and our city programs can begin operating as soon as possible. As every year, we have a very extensive citizen participation process, so I want to make sure that the council recalls that we begin the annual action planning process in January of each year. So we have been doing community workshops, public hearings, public needs hearings, which for the second year in a row, I'm very proud to announce, has been standing room only. We may actually have to go to a bigger meeting room for that meeting, because we've had so many community members showing up and voicing their concerns and needs that they want to see addressed in these plans. And so those needs have been addressed and were the framework for the plan that was drafted and put out for public review for a 30-day period that concluded in April on the 23rd. Following that, the HCDC, the Housing Community Development Commission, had another public hearing and took more public comment. On May 10th, the city council held the final public hearing, and all of those public comments, including the stuff beginning way back in January, are included in the annual action plan under the Appendix A. There are some that required city responses. That is all in that package as well, so if you have any questions, it is all included in the action plan. I'd be able to, I'm happy to go over some of the notable CDBG activities. I know that a lot of times, that's where the focus is. So I just wanted to quickly let you know that in our housing categories, and again, all of this detail is in the PowerPoint, it is in the action plan, it is in the staff report, but the housing activities that will be included this year, should the plan be approved, would benefit over 100 residents of our community that would either apply based on their income or because of their senior status, which is 62 years of age and older. But those are lead paint abatement and repab and repair and senior paint programs and other rehabilitation programs offered by the nonprofits in our community. The Public Services category includes our after-school senior hot meals programs offered by parks, but also offered by some of our nonprofits. Other programs include the Boys and Girls Club, some Section III training, capacity building for a CDC and tenant education, and then two items that are more related to homeless activities this year, which will be working with the Pavarello House for a hotel motel voucher program, as well as the West Care Turning Point Facility that does bridge housing. And then under Public Facility Improvement, that category, again this year, as in past years, the majority of that goes towards our Public Works Department and our Parks Department, and so there will be a lot of activities in those fields. Again, it's all detailed in the reports, but includes for pavement reconstruction, sidewalk and curb improvements. And then under Parks, it includes tot lots, play equipment, ADA compliance for restrooms, shade structures, things of that nature. And then here again, we've also included nonprofit activity, and the agencies that will be benefiting from that in this proposed plan are Marjorie Mason Center for some additional kitchen rehabilitation that they're in need of, the West Care MLK Facility, the Pavarello House again, but it's more for a heating and cooling facility improvement, and then for helping others pursue excellence, which is the agency that will be providing the Section III training for some ADA compliance in their facility. So to wrap up, I wanted to just ask Brianna from the clerk's office, perhaps she could pass this out to you, but there is one change that is noteworthy in the proposed plan that is not included in your package, and I wanted to make sure you had it in front of you because it's numbers, but it's very minor, it's simply a mathematical correction. But before I asked for approval of this plan, I wanted to make sure you were aware of one change, and that is simply that on page 42 of the plan, project number 16, having to do with the HOPWA program. So that is the housing opportunities for people with AIDS. There's just some math corrections on the funding amount, and so it reflects the allocation. On page 42, project 16 will reflect the amount of $484,906, and on project 17, page 43, it will reflect $14,977. Again, just wanted to make sure the council and the public was aware of that change before I asked for approval. So that concludes my remarks on the plan. Again, we are asking for approval. I think that it is essential we continue moving this ball down the road quickly so that we can start implementing these activities in our community. And myself, Tom Morgan, and some members of the housing team are available if you have any questions or would like further information.
So what we'll do, we'll go out to, do we still go to the public today? Yes, we'll go out to the public. Are there any folks in the public who wish to comment on the item? If you want to come forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Mary Esther Korea. I know that you guys are the ones that make all the decisions for the monies that are going to be spent, but you have to take into consideration that the rail is way over budget. Their taxes are, property taxes are going high, the groceries are going more and more higher, gas is already way high, and, well, you have to think about the poor people and the average people like myself, I consider myself average, but you have to consider that the majority of the people are not rich or well-off. You know, we have to consider them, and there's a lot of people here in my district that are suffering. The water bill is going higher, the electric is higher, everything is, and, you know, I will have to address this one. Couple, I went to the code enforcement hearing, even though they don't care, they just fined us. There was two people that were there that couldn't hear, couldn't speak English, and I told, they were calling his name, they're calling people's name, and there were only two Hispanics there, and I said, "What's your name?" "Cómo te llamas?" And he said, "Oh, so-and-so." I said, "Well, they just called your name." "Ahorita te hallaran." "¿Y por qué no fuistes?" "Pues, no entiendo inglés." "I don't understand English." And the hearing order for the code enforcement was already fining him, you have to pay $500 or $300 or $5. And you know what the man said? I was interpreting for him. I said, "This against the law for you not to have an interpreter here, because he's a property owner and he doesn't understand." And you have to consider that. Also, he said, "Well, tell him that I'm going to pay the whatever they want us to pay." And it's $500, and one was $300. And he said, "Can you wait until I get my social security so I can give you the money?" That's crazy, and you guys don't understand, because you're not in the public with the poor people and the normal people like myself. That's crazy. Think about when you advocate all the money that you have to not go over just because they come over here, they want money, money, but you have to think about the homeless and the poor people, and there's a lot of them here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to comment on this item? Please come on down, state your name, address for the record. You will have three minutes.
Thank you, council. You've heard me speak. My name is Nicole Linder with the Marjorie Mason Center. I'm nauseam about this. I just wanted to again thank you for your support. We are honored and blessed to continue to have a strong relationship with Marjorie Mason's family. Her brother Alfred is here to speak with you today.
How you doing? I'm Alfred Mason, Marjorie's brother, and on behalf of the family, for many years, you guys have stepped up today and prior days to help the Marjorie Mason Center continue. I am a retired police officer myself, so I understand the impact of the Marjorie Mason Center. So thank you so very much, and I pray that it continues to sort the Fresno community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to comment on this item? Great, so we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. You know, a lot of people attended these meetings, but I'm the voice for District 4, and today I'm really happy and I'm really sad. Why am I happy? I'm happy to hear that we increased this budget by $1.5 million. Looking at $11.1 million as a top number, only to be superseded by the grand total of $14 million, so I'm really, really happy about that. However, in reviewing the documents, there's a couple of things that are happening that District 4 residents wish to participate in and have always wanted to participate in, and that's the senior hot meals, and the other is the Parks After-School Program. So those two programs total $780,000 of CDBG funds. However, to qualify for those funds and to have participation in your district, you have to have a community center. And as you all know, District 4 does not have a community center. However, those that do qualify for these funds, I want to recite those for you, the Mary Ellen Brown Community Center, Mosqueda Community Center, Pine Dale Community Center, Senior Citizens Village, Inspiration Park, Dickey Youth Development Center, Einstein Center, Think White Neighborhood Center, Frank H. Ball Neighborhood Center, Holmes Neighborhood Center, Lafayette Center, Maxiel Park Center, Quigley Park Center, Romaine Center, Ted C. Will's Community Center. With all that, there is no community center in District 4. I've brought this up numerous times, and this is the best time to bring it up again, I believe. So unfortunately, no one in District 4 will be able to participate, and this further demonstrates the desperate need for a community center in District 4. Otherwise, my residents will be, will continue to be excluded from this important services provided by the CDBG funds, but I want to put that on the record. So with all those community centers, one more would be a great asset. Just one, that's all I need for District 4. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Baines.
Thank Council President. Quick question, Kelly. For the park facility improvements, you have the Maxiel Parks Walking Trail and HVAC, if funds available. What does that mean?
So what we did was we wanted to include the project and the potential of the project, but because it hadn't been really defined and wasn't necessarily shelf-ready, we didn't have any of the dollar figures associated with it, and we had fully allocated what we have in the budget towards the other projects ahead of it. As in years past, we anticipate that there's going to be some savings, and so our intention is to, as we get through the year and understand the savings that we have, that this project is already lined up and has been vetted in the public setting, so that when and if additional funds become available in this plan year, we would be able to apply them towards that project.
So the project has or has not been scoped?
It has not been scoped, not that I am aware of. It came very last minute into this process in, I think, March, and so I don't know that there's enough details to say that it's planned, it's shovel-ready at this point, but there's things that we can be doing to get it there.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Chavez.
Kelly, I just have a quick question for the CDBG public services. I know that we have a couple partnerships with Habitat for the senior paint program, and then also the roof replacement, and then the rehabilitation. Is this the current budget of what we spent this previous year?
So the 2017-18 year, I believe that we had $100,000 with Habitat for a paint program only, and this year, the 18-19 year that's proposed and in front of you, is in addition to that, so it's more, it's 200 and, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, it's 215, okay. So it's 215, and it's for more rehabilitation, so it's additional scope that they did last year. So they're still implementing the program from last year that has to do with the paint program, and so this would be more rehabilitation. It's a little bit more of a mixture of their programs for this coming year.
Did we expend all the funds from the previous budget?
We have not.
We have not.
Again, the delay in the federal budget last year was more significant than it was this year, which caused delay in getting the contracts awarded, and so there's been significant delays in getting that done and then meeting insurance requirements. There's a lot of capacity to be built whenever you take on this kind of work for the first time. Last year was the first time that Habitat applied for these funds, so we've accomplished all those hurdles, and so we're in good shape for moving forward.
Okay. And then this is more of a question for our city manager, a request. I know that the mayor is working on a project with regards to homelessness in partnership with the county. Love to meet with you and chat with that. I know that I've been chatting with him for the last couple of months, and I was tempted to bring something forward, but I'm going to wait until there's a little bit more of a conversation with those entities, but I'd love to meet with you guys and discuss that a little further, just so we can let our constituents know what the plan is, short-term, long-term, and all that.
I'm happy to set that up.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Looks like everyone, the screen is clear. I just have a couple of questions, Kelly, just to follow up on the senior paint program. So I know that we've awarded additional dollars to Habitat. We've increased it by $115,000. What about the $100,000 that we have in the city? Did we expend those, or?
So for the, I'm sorry, for the year that we're currently sitting in, so we have done, we have, you know, I don't have, Tom, do you know, I don't think that we've expended fully the city-performed Habitat, I'm sorry, the city-performed senior paint projects. I know that we've identified the applicants, but I don't think they've been expended.
So what's in process?
Sorry, come to the, please introduce yourself.
My name is Tom Morgan. I'm the housing manager in DARM. We will fully expend the funds with what is currently in process. For the reasons cited before, we didn't get our funding agreements from HUD until October, and then we've gone through the process of qualifying people, doing bid walks and procurements, and literally the work has just started. But paint program projects move fairly quickly, and we actually expect to have those projects done by the end of the fiscal year.
And for this last year, it was $100,000 as well? Is that what we had allocated?
Yes.
Citywide?
City performed was $100,000, and then Habitat performed. There was an additional $100,000.
So my question is, is it that we don't have the capacity to do the $315,000 that we're allocating for senior paint?
So the city will continue to do some senior paint as well this, in the 18-19 year, where we're proposing that we continue doing the city-performed as well, and so it's really an effort more to build the capacity of the nonprofits in our city to come up to speed and be able to do this work as well, so that it wouldn't be dependent solely on city-performed work.
Well, and I guess that's my Well, and I guess that's my question is, does the city have the capacity to do the 315,000 or are we contracting out because we don't have the capacity? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get your guys' logic about, I get in terms of supporting nonprofits, but this is something new that they've engaged recently in. So I'm just trying to figure out, what's the logic behind having them do the work that we already do?
So the city could do the full amount of senior paint only. We do not have the ability to perform the rehab work that goes with that. We tend to do contractors for rehab work and for the painting as well. And we contract it all out. So there is capacity to do additional in senior paint. However, our real goal was to spread that so we could build capacity in the nonprofits. So that was the reasoning behind doing it, that we want to have these nonprofits out there doing the work in the community so that it's not solely.
Can they do more than what we can? Like are they able to, or is it the same cost in terms of doing one?
So the specific costs, I think, are pretty similar. However, what we want, the reason that we kept it split between being city performed and nonprofit performed is that we have lead-certified staff. And the cost of doing, abating a home that has lead paint that's been identified is much more intensive than just a repainting of a traditional house. And so we didn't know that, and Habitat themselves, whenever they applied for the 17-18 money, put in their proposal that they could only do maybe a few of those while the city can perform those one after another. So we wanted to make sure that they built that capacity before they were given more of that work. And so there was the reason in the 17-18 year why we split it up.
How many more homes are we going to be able to do with the additional dollars?
So for the 18-19 year that's in front of you, so the total, if, I'm sorry, I don't have my pages flipped open, but the total was over 100 individuals, properties that we thought would qualify for the variety of different rehab programs. For the senior paint that the city performs, I think that we typically put enough in and estimate around 15 to 20. And again, it depends on the quality that the house is in whenever we get out and do the bid tours, as Mr. Morgan was talking about.
How do they go about identifying who they're going to go and do and provide the service to? Like are we able to contact them and say, hey, we have a house in our district, can you consider them? Or do they already have who they're planning to serve?
Are you asking about Habitat?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to address that? Because this team has worked really closely to coordinate those efforts. Please go ahead.
I'm going to do the repeat the question. I was busy getting the number.
I was just asking about how they go about in choosing who they are going to provide the service to, like what kind of outreach efforts? And can the council members also request that they consider some of our folks?
So for the city part of the paint program, we actually carried over a list from the previous year. And we went to that list for this year. And so we're actually working off of an interest list that really began the process of being generated more than 18 months ago. Habitat has been doing their own outreach and marketing, plus we're referring to them overflow, if you will, from our list. We pretty much have committed our, unless there's some savings on the 10 jobs, we've committed all of our funding for the current year to the paint projects. They still have some funding capacity that hasn't been committed yet, is our understanding. Have I answered your question?
Yeah, okay. Perfect. I think those were all my questions. I appreciate your guys' time in answering the questions I had. Counsel member Capriolio.
Thank you, council president. I wanted to make a motion to approve the requested item here, but I wanted to amend it to include $200,000 for planning of a D4 community center. And I think, from what I read, the program savings of approximately $200,000 would be enough to get us off the ground and service the citizens of District Four.
I would like to ask staff, Jennifer or Kelly or Tom, is that an eligible expense? And can you walk us through that, please?
So, council member Jennifer Clark, Director of Development Resource Management. So what program are you proposing to remove the funding from so that I can understand?
It was my understanding that there are program savings included in the budget.
So, no. So program income is what we are carrying over or we get returned. So for programs where there's a loan or program income from a project, that's included in the total amount. So we've budgeted the entire pool of funds that were available.
Counsel member Capriolio, may I ask a question on your behalf?
Absolutely.
I think what Council member Capriolio is attempting to do is, in the event that at the end of the year, if there are program savings, income savings, he'd like those dollars to be allocated towards planning for a community center for someplace in his district, in an eligible area. I think there are eligible areas in his district that would be okay to put a community center with CDBG funds, but I think he needs some planning dollars. So I think that, just to summarize, I think that's kind of what the idea is.
Okay. So for reprogramming at the end of the year, if there are savings, which would allow us to develop a scope and to determine what that would look like ahead of time? Because as Ms. Furtado has really hammered into our heads for the last couple of years is we want projects that are shovel-ready, that we can expend within each grant year. So we want to get as much of it pre-planned as possible before we would even want to fund a project that we may or may not be able to complete within a time period. So I'm going to let Mr. Morgan.
And I think his idea is our planning dollars first. I think before, if I understand correctly, because we've been kind of working on this together, I think the idea is to get some planning dollars initially so that at some point, he can bring a project back that could potentially have some CDBG funding, but there needs some planning dollars.
So there is a cap on planning administration. Currently, it is fully allocated for those activities for this year, primarily to fund the administration of the program. It would be an eligible activity under public facilities, which I think is a better fit for where it would be rather than under the planning and administration cap. It makes it very difficult to administer the program and to follow the federal guidelines without utilizing that full 10% allocation under CDBG. But if there are savings in community facilities, that could be a place where we could incrementally fund the architectural and engineering in a phase and then acquisition of property in a phase and ultimately the construction of the facility so that we don't do a large chunk of money that we can't draw down within a fiscal year. So absolutely eligible.
I think the council member would be happy, I think the council member would be happy with that.
Okay. Does that meet your need?
Yes, it's a beginning. Let me say one thing to you guys. I'm one phone call away from having 3.8 acres donated to the city of Fresno. So it semi-makes it shovel-ready and council member Chavez and I are going to make that call. And I'm pretty confident that this will come to pass. So we've got land, it's qualified, it's CDBG-eligible, as is most of my district, quite frankly. We're low-income and, quite frankly, just poor. So this would be the ability or a way of getting the dollars to get this off the ground. And I've got some eligibility, planning, urban environmental design, policy planning, management, capacity, activities, and this clearly falls within that realm. It's Section 570.205. And I know we can find, I know we can find the money.
Thank you. That was going to be my question, is if there was a location. And I just want to underscore that we are hearing loud and clear that it's program savings, it would be in the public facilities category, $200,000. And I just want to say, I want to make sure that it's clear that putting it in the action plan, there's still a lot that would need to be coordinated through the manager's office because we don't have staff that would be able to help develop the plan. We can definitely help with getting the plan funded and making sure it meets our regulations. But I just want to be very clear that you understand that the Housing Division doesn't have the type of staff available to help develop the actual plan. And the community center, clearly Parks would need to be involved, city manager's office. I know you know all that, but I just wanted to underscore.
True enough, but I can take care of that if I have the funding.
I have one other question for you while you're up here, before you leave. Shovel-ready, can you talk us through what shovel-ready means? It's not just having the land, so.
Well, for me, the biggest thing that, thank you for asking, city manager, the biggest thing for me, as many of you know, we get really excited come April of every year because on May 1st, HUD holds us accountable for having spent a certain portion of our CDBG funds. And so regardless of if our allocation from them comes six months late or not, by May 1st of every year, we are held very accountable for spending a certain portion or else they sanction that money and take it back away from us. So my biggest concern is always that it's been well-documented, it's eligible, it's been expended, and then we've been able to draw it down from our federal line of credit so that we can reimburse the city for it in a timely manner. So that's really been my biggest request of the projects and the activities that get included in these plans every year, that they're ready to be spent.
Can I add a comment? So I'm supportive of his proposal and his motion to find those dollars. I think that it's very, very important. You've been talking about this for a couple of years and so I'll be supportive of those efforts. I think one thing that I will also encourage, so today, as part of the action plan, about half a million are going to community facility improvements, which I think is great. And so I think within those dollars, as we're looking forward and we're looking at cobbling the enough dollars to be able to build it, that we need to be seriously looking at prioritizing this public facility that your district needs. And so I think that, you know, hopefully the staff and the administration hears that you have a number of colleagues that are supporting you in those efforts.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate that. We could discuss this further and further. I know there's staff members that do shovel-ready projects. This location has infrastructure, water, sewer, all available. It's, quite frankly, at the corner of Cedar and Gettysburg, in the heart of my district and the heart of my senior citizens as well. So I appreciate all your support and thank you all very much. Look forward to your vote.
So there's a motion and, oh, sorry. Counsel member Brenda.
Okay, so I just wanted to add, Councilman Capriolio, in general, I'm very supportive of you getting a community center that you've been driving for for some time. So my question, I guess, to the administration or even to you, councilman, is, is this the right vehicle to do that? Or would it be in, to set aside dollars or would it be in the upcoming budget discussion? So right now, you're, I think you're, if I understand your motion correctly, what you need in order to get your dollars is some potential savings in this action plan, but that's not necessarily guaranteed savings from the action plan. But if, you're essentially saying, if there's savings in the action plan, then you would have your dollars. And are you satisfied with that? As opposed to inside of the budget talks next month, finding $200,000 and actually putting it in the budget? So.
Actually, thank you for those comments. I'm going to reach out in every hearing that we have on budget to get the support from the budget as well as CDBG and any other resources. 1.5 billion-dollar budget, I know it's allocated. You have $330 billion in general fund plus CDBG. We can't find enough to have liftoff on this community center. I just need the planning dollars right now and we can cobble the rest later. But sometime, we have to get going. I've got, I only have two years, seven months left. So I have to have support and I have to get this going or else D4 will once again be without a community center. And I enjoy and encourage you with your community centers and the development that's transpired there, it's fantastic. I'm so envious of it and I want to encourage and support you on your community centers as well. But there comes a time when we have to level the playing field, as they say. And I appreciate your support on that.
Well, to continue my comments, then, I think that today, that I would be supportive of this if there's savings. I can certainly see the savings going to a community center. I mean, it's qualified, it's the type of projects that these dollars are used for. So I can, but I'm not sure if the savings would be there. And so it's a, to me, it's a little bit sketchier way of getting there. I don't know the impacts to what everything Kelly does, you know, what that would be. But I, in general, I'm very supportive, as I have been, of your potential community center and if it takes being a part of the motion today. But I want to say, a year in advance, you might not get those dollars going this route and then you'll be one year, seven months away. And so I want you to know that there might be a better way or a different way.
Counsel member Brenda, can I just add? I think that this is just one bucket. I think as we look at the budget, this body will have an opportunity to look at all the other resources that we may have available where we can begin to cobble up. We're not going to be able probably to get the entire amount, but he just needs to get started with planning. And then once he gets that planning going, you know, we can start setting aside the money to construct.
And that's fine. So I just wanted to get that out there. It's a good time to discuss these type of projects. And so I don't know how much planning dollars a community center needs and then you've rapidly got to get beyond planning, which it sounds like you're working on. So, yeah.
May I? If I could just offer a partial suggestion to council member Capriolio. Earlier in the motion for amending the action plan, you had indicated that if savings were available to do so, perhaps if you wanted to direct staff to work within our Department of Public Works and our Parks Department, who have a majority of that category of funding this year, perhaps we could look at the projects that were included and seeing if there was a way to perhaps re-scope them, to see if we could find sufficient funds for 200,000 to be called out as a definite line item instead of, and if there was additional savings. Does that make sense? I don't know that I articulated that very well.
No, you're, we're on the right path. That's what I garner. So I amend my amendment to include your language.
I have a motion and a second. Council member Libby.
Thank you, council president. What's the motion?
The motion is to approve the action plan with the amendment that if there's cost savings, we would set 200,000, up to 200,000 aside for the planning of this community center.
As you know, council member Capriolio, I want to be as supportive as possible. You've been saying for years that there's a great need for a community center in your district and I appreciate that because I'm also working on a community center for somewhere in central Fresno. It doesn't have to be in my district. But as you know, I've been working for more than a year now. We had a seniors task force and it's probably review for you, but for some others, I'll just kind of share my remarks. We had a senior task force that came together and met for more than half a year and issued a white paper on the grave need for a senior center, for senior citizens. Bruce Rudd, before leaving the city, took it upon himself to work with our Parks Department. And I know with the support of city manager and the administration to actually create a business plan for seniors, the establishment of a senior center. That business plan is done, it's completed and should be coming to you, what, right after budget or?
In June.
In June. We're going, this body will have a chance to review the administration's actual business And again, I want to be supportive, but is there any way we can do it without $200,000? Is there a way that just the administration could do a business plan for you the same way that they did one for the seniors? Is that possible? Because I mean, I'm very supportive. I want to see that project completed. I think that's good work. But I think that this is going to be a tight budget cycle for us. I really do. And I think when we get into budget hearings, we're going to learn that it's a very tight budget cycle for us. And I think that 200... And I think that $200,000 is an awful lot of money, and we don't even know how much it costs to do a plan for a community center. I mean, getting the land, that's fantastic. If that comes to fruition, that's half the battle, because once we have that, you know, it's off to the races. You and I did that on Martin Ray Riley Park, when we got free land to build a park. So does that help? Do you kind of understand where I'm at right now? I want to support the motion, but if we can get a study for, you know, if staff has time, if Parvin and, you know, if they have staff time to do it, and the administration would commit to doing it, that would be a huge step forward without encumbering this money that we may desperately need. Does that make sense?
Yes. And what you're talking about is another bucket, hopefully, of availability for this project to ultimately be part of District 4. So it's not excluding anything, but it's just an additional part. I think a strong support and vote here would send a clear message to the administration that we needed to get this done yesterday. So I would always keep an open mind for that aspect. I also want to let you know that we've been working pretty hard on this, my staff, and Parvin, he's not here, but he actually had a game plan from South Carolina that we've tried to fold into this project. Diagrams, programs, et cetera, and he calls it a multi-generational center. And so we just need some help to refine that to the demographics of District 4 and the city of Fresno. Included in that is a senior center aspect of it as well. We can provide programs for seniors. You and I have districts that are heavily populated by seniors, and so this could fold into that as well. It would not be a senior center per se, but we would have an opportunity to include programs from zero to five. I've been talking to Bob Nelson with Fresno Unified, to, you know, 70, 80 years old, and all that in between. So I think we've been working pretty hard on that, and we're at a point now where we need some financing to get it off the ground and get the planning part done, and then we'll continue to evolve. Does that help you a little?
It does. It does.
So I'm not coming here empty-handed. We've, I've got a folder this thick on the planning we've engaged in for the community center for some time, and with the help of my colleagues here as well, and Parvin has done a great job. He's very supportive.
Well, you know, like I said, I think that we're in for a more difficult budget cycle than we're expecting. I think that we're going to learn some things. I know that the senior center is off the table because this organization can't afford it. And that's, you know, a battle that I will continue to fight and look for other ways to fund it.
Maybe we could cobble our efforts together.
Yeah, I think that, I would really welcome that. So I just, I hear folks say that, you know, whatever, we just are going to have a very difficult month of prioritizing. Because I think that we're going to, I would like to cut some stuff to do a senior center. But I know that if we cut those things, it's going to be a battle up here, because everything we do is so very essential, and we could not even go forward unless we have XYZ. And so, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you've had seven great years here at City Council. Have you ever had a budget season where we've not been told it's going to be a really tight year, going to have to cut programs, we've got to do this, that, and the other? And I see Gary nodding his head up and down, and I'm sure it was true in your previous time on the council. So if there's a will, there's a way. And I think we have the will, and I'm sure we can find a way. So I'd appreciate your support today.
I want to go ahead and call for the vote.
Can I just jump in really quick?
Hold on, let me get Councilmember Brenda, I know he's been waiting for some time, but I will want to call for the vote immediately after that.
I actually still was speaking, but that's okay. We're in a hurry, so let's go.
No, go ahead. Paul, I'm fully supportive of your community center and want to do everything we can to help you get that. Same with the senior citizen center. In some ways, I'm not sure we can't merge the two in some way. Is there a difference for your community center versus a senior center? I mean, they kind of provide similar services, right?
Exactly. I don't, like I said to Member Olivier, we could cobble those together. There's a way to do that. We may have to expand the program or plan to accommodate more seniors, if that is the wish and the will of the council here. So I'd be happy to talk about that in further detail, but I have to have money to get this program and planning going and to implement what Parvin has provided and get all this on a sheet of paper so we can review it in detail, logistically, so, yes.
And the thing that I want to say, because I share your same sentiment, every budget's tight. It is always a question of priorities, and it isn't the administration giving us something and we have to say, oh, we didn't get it this year. These council members up here decide the whole game. You want a senior citizen center this year, a community center this year? It's up to us to make it happen. It's not up to ask the administration to do it for us. So Paul, if you want it, we have to take a serious look at programs that we've spent money on that maybe we shouldn't be funding anymore, that maybe it is more important to fund a senior citizen center and a community center than perhaps some of the commissions that we fund and some of the other things that we fund. We have to take a serious look at it and say, that's just not as important. It's important, but it's not as important as having a community center or a senior citizen center. It's up to us to make those calls, and we have the budget. This is the time. You should be able to get that senior citizen center or the community center, you should be able to get it this year. I'm in favor of it. So let's make it happen this year. We don't have to ask an administration to come and give it to us.
Thank you. I really, really appreciate that.
Councilmember Olivier?
Yeah. Wow, that's a, it feels like Christmas morning in here. I'm so excited to spend money with you, Gary. Let me, let me just submit this to people here, okay? Coming from, now, this has absolutely nothing to do with you or the process you're in or anything. I'm going to just share you, with you, my process. I'm not suggesting that you create a task force, okay? But I'm just going to talk this council through this, if I may, for a few minutes, so that everybody can understand kind of where I'm coming from on this.
Clint, just before you go?
Yeah.
I have a task force, six colleagues right here.
Okay. Well, in my case, I decided to bring together 30 community leaders in geriatrics and senior, senior care and education and, okay. We sat down and we created the white paper and submitted the white paper to the council here. And everybody was very open-minded and accepted the white paper. City Manager Bruce Rudd went through with Parks, and they've come up with a business plan, okay? I remember Parks presenting the business plan to me, and they said, well, we can do some kind of senior center by leasing an existing, leasing an existing building or leasing an existing storefront or someplace in Manchester Center, and it's going to be $600,000 a year to the general fund. Well, Clovis provides senior programming for, out of their general fund. So we could do that as well. That's one way that we could do it. And so talked with some folks in the administration. It's not, okay, but first I said to the Parks people, that's too much money. We can never get that past the council. Council's tight. We're never going to get $600,000 a year out of the council. Try again. Come back with something that's lower price, whether it's reduced programming or less square footage or... So they came back, and I think it was somewhere around half a million dollars a year. It doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it's not $500,000. It's not $200,000. The cost of the senior center as presented in the business plan and the way that people like Jane look at it is, over five years, that's $2.5 million. And so it's not, to me, it's not rah rah, we're the kings, let's spend the money. The reality is that the budget bean counter people say, well, over two, over five years, that's $2.5 million. And when you're talking about being in a building with a mayor who wants to put 1,000 police officers on the streets, $2.5 million is a lot of money. And I respect public safety, and I respect the goals of this administration to put those officers on the street, but we're talking about a senior center for $2.5 million over five years. That's what's going to be tough to pay for. And so I'm just sharing this as kind of to let you in on why I understand that it's going to be difficult for this administration. So when budget time comes, and when somebody makes a motion to go ahead with the senior center, the administration has to come up with $2.5 million over five years, and some stuff's going to get cut. And it wouldn't surprise me if the city manager said, Clint, you've made a motion to lease and construct and program a senior center out of our Parks Department. Now what are you going to cut to come up with that money? And once again, you know, this isn't my first rodeo. I've been on this council, I served with Cynthia Sterling in Mike Dageas a long time ago. And every year, the council says, well, the administration is hoarding money. And every year, it's tighter than the council thinks. So I guess I'm just throwing those things out there to be supportive, not to talk you out of it, because there's no talking you out of it, and that's good, because that's what you were elected to do. But just, just to say that it is about priorities and the long-term cost for these kinds of things, and I'm not even talking about what you're trying to do, Member Capriolio, I'm talking about what I'm trying to do. The long-term cost is sometimes prohibitive, and that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and call for the question.
If I may.
May I? I'd like to jump in, though, quickly.
I want to make sure the motion is articulated, so another opportunity when you're done.
We'll do.
Right. So I want to make sure that Councilmember Capriolio knows the administration is committing to working with you to explore the community center in your district. And we do support the motion, and Kelly can help with figuring out the language for the motion. But I want to point out, too, that, you know, we're going to have to really look at what, if it is $200,000, what that gets us. And we do need architectural and engineering drawings for it to be shovel-ready. And I want to make sure, do we have to pay back the funds if we don't construct the community center? And what's that timing to do so?
So, yes, there's opportunities for multi-year projects. Yes, we've done them before. We did the, one of the specific plans. I think the Southwest Pacific Plan took like two or three years. Roy and Almy, some projects, they take multi-years. But as far as, does it have to be repaid if the project, the planning that we do, if the actual construction doesn't happen? I believe it does have to be repaid, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's like within two years. Is that about right?
So I think that there's time.
Absolutely.
And we can have that discussion at a later time if we need to, but I think at this point, we want to move forward. So the motion, again...
Is to amend the budget to include $200,000 for planning of the D4 community center, as well as continue or direct the staff to do their part in putting this project together. So there's, they're not mutually exclusive. One is money, one is planning, or two is planning. So that's, that's the motion.
Great. So we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Travis. Any opposition?
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Baines was the second.
Is there any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 7-0. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead, we're already into the lunch hour, so we have still a couple things on the agenda, so we're going to recess for lunch and then come back at 1:30. We're going to go ahead and resume the meeting. So we'll go on to General Administration, Item 3A, Public Works Department, actions pertaining to landscape maintenance in community facility districts, landscape and lightning maintenance.
Good afternoon, Council. Erin Aguirre, Public Works. The item before you today has three items for consideration and/or approval. Item one is approval requirements contract with all commercial landscaping in the amount of $522,660 to provide monthly landscape maintenance services in selected community facilities districts. Second item is an approval of requirements contract with all commercial landscaping in the amount of $280,720 to provide 60-day landscape maintenance in the landscape line maintenance district. Finally, excuse me, an approval of a requirements contract with elite maintenance and tree service in the amount of $322,888 to provide monthly landscape maintenance services for selected pump stations operated by Department of Public Utilities. The landscape maintenance contract is a rebid for work currently being performed by a professional landscape maintenance for routine maintenance in our CFDs, LMDs, and DPU pump stations. The city has solicited proposals for professional landscape maintenance services for the routine maintenance in these mature landscapes. The contract shall be in effect for five years with three one-year intervals for renewal. Staff recommends the approval and is available for any questions.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Brenda, this is second, by Councilmember Baines. I just have one question, Erin. So for the CFDs that are within the city, I know there's a number of them, mostly west of the 99 in my district, is the level of service going to be the same or is it going to be augmented? Just wondering in terms of the contracts that we'll be approving today.
The level of service, you have a mixture of what we call weekly landscape maintenance districts which have turf. Those will remain the same. They're actually on a different contract. Your CFDs that have trees and shrubs will stay with a 30-day service, as well as your LMDs, that'll stay on a 60-day service. The difference on some of the LMDs, they'll be completely done by a vendor versus city forces.
Great. And so does that mean that they'll get it more regularly or just the same?
It's the same. And then what we would do with the staff is they would be more skilled as far as like planting shrubs and trees in some of those areas.
So the existing staff that we have wouldn't be impacted in terms of, okay? They'll just be redirected to do other sorts of work?
Correct. Other skilled work, tree planting, replanting of shrubs, irrigation work, and so forth.
Right. Okay. So we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we'll move on to Item 3B. This is Public Works and Public Utilities, actions pertaining to Sanger Unified School District projects at Armstrong-Jensen and Fowler Avenues in District 5.
Good afternoon. I'm Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department. We are here today looking for your approval of two agreements with Sanger Unified School District on a new educational complex that they are planning to build on the corner of Fowler and Jensen. The two agreements, the, one of the agreements is primarily a public works agreement. It deals with street improvements, traffic signals, some other work that they'll be doing. And then the second agreement is primarily part of the water and sewer system for public utilities. We've met with them. These are, the street improvements are primarily the result of their EIR. Their EIR identified that some traffic concerns that needed to be mitigated. We've worked with them to mitigate the traffic. They'll be doing most of the work before the school's completed. They have, they built, about four years ago, they built an elementary school campus. Their next phase will be a middle school campus, and then the final phase will be a high school and a stadium. So what they're starting on now is the middle school campus. They hope to have students there by 2019. Have any questions? I'd be glad to answer some details.
Great. We have a motion to approve, and I'll second that. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. We have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 6-0. Seeing none, motion carries six zero with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next item is Item 3C, and this is our Police Department, Action to Authorize a Chief of Police to Enter into Agreement with Fresno Unified School District to Provide 11 Student Resource Officers at 100% of the actual officer's cost. A police sergeant at 90% of the actual sergeant's cost.
Good afternoon, members of council. Lydia Karosko, Deputy Chief. And what the department is requesting today is that council authorize the agreement with Fresno Unified, as well as Fresno County Superintendent of Schools. With Fresno Unified, it would be to provide 11 student resource officers at 100% of the actual cost, which is an increase from previously being 75%, plus administrative fees of the patrol vehicle lease cost of 12 patrol vehicles for an annual cost to Fresno Unified of $1,725,941. And we're also requesting the council authorize us to enter in the agreement, into an agreement with Fresno County Superintendent of Schools to provide one student resource officer also at 100% funding, plus administrative fees, as well as the vehicle lease costs, for a total of $143,503 for one officer. Fresno Police Department and the Unified School District have had a continuous agreement in place since 1995. And as I mentioned, the funding will pay for 11 police officers and 10% of a police sergeant. I'm sorry, that's 90%. 10% of it is paid by Central Unified, since the sergeant performs duties supervising not only Fresno Unified, but other school districts as well. And the 11 school resource officers will perform law enforcement duties at all of the high schools in the city of Fresno and one middle school. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So there's a motion, and I'll second that motion, but we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Bretafeld.
Yes. So, how many schools will be affected by having the resource officers either rotate or whatever?
Well, for this contract with the Fresno Unified School District, it'll be all of the high schools.
All of the high schools.
And right now, we have a total of 14 school resource officers, 10 of them in high schools and one of them in a middle school.
Okay. Excellent. I mean, light of what we see throughout the nation, I mean, this is a way of hardening those schools, and we obviously hope and pray nothing like what's happened across the country ever happens here, but this is a way to hopefully prevent it and hopefully deal with it. And I'm fully supportive and greatly appreciate all the Police Department does to keep our schools, our communities safe, and our kids safe, and I'll fully support this.
Perfect. Thank you. Just one question, Deputy Chief. So, you said we're going from 70% now to 100%?
75 to 100.
Or 75?
Yes.
Does the fact that they're going to pay now 100%, are the officers still going to be kind of, I know they're mostly in the school, right? But do they go near the surrounding neighborhoods, or?
Our student neighborhood resource officers do. The student resource officers are primarily in the schools.
Okay. So there's a distinction?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So, there is a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries six zero with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we'll go on to the City Council Items. We have Item 4A, being sponsored by Councilmember Bretafeld. It's a resolution authorizing council members to enter into contracts to mow the front lawn of vacant properties.
Okay, thank you. First off, I appreciate meeting with the administration. We met yesterday, and we've talked before. I think for this property that we have in my district, I think we've resolved the issue, and there will be abatement taking place. I wanted to leave this on the agenda, and we don't need an action item for this, but I was curious about council members who have obviously many similar type situations where the properties are vacant, people have been fined, the property owners, and maybe some fees have collected. In this case, we've actually had $30,000 worth of fees collected, and we were going to use those fees to prevent this from just continuing to be a blighted property, which invites squatters coming in, breaking in, breaking windows, becoming a fire hazard, a police hazard. So I think that we may have this issue resolved. I was just curious, in terms of other council members, if you have similar situations with properties like this, and whether fees have been collected, and what you've done, and what your thoughts are regarding this.
Councilmember Travis.
We do have, I've had a couple of properties in that similar situation. Now, the question I just had was, is this just for residential, or is it going to be for some of the commercial properties as well?
Well, that's for the dialogue. That's what I'm curious about. I mean, again, I met with Wilma and her staff yesterday, and I think we've addressed the issue with this one particular property. I'm curious if other members feel like this is a similar property, or it's a commercial issue as well, if there's some other means that we as a council feel that a policy ought to be in place. That's what I'm interested in hearing today. I'm not, I don't feel the need to move forward with this after meeting with the city manager and her staff.
And so, I guess the question is for the city manager, so do we have tools already kind of in the toolbox to address some of that?
Yeah, I'm going to have Kelly address that. And Councilmember Bretafeld, I wanted to thank you for taking the time for meeting with us, because I do think we found a solution. And I understand that the property in question in your district was abated this morning. Is that correct? Yeah.
So, to just answer that direct question, we have tools in place to abate properties that have violation. I believe what the council member is proposing is a proactive effort before it quite gets to being in violation. So we do not have tools in place for property maintenance. We have tools in place for once things get out of hand enough that it violates a law, then we go in and we enforce. We expect voluntary compliance from property owners. When we don't get it, then we go in and we abate. So we have tools for that, which was the situation this morning, which we abated. But we do not currently have tools in place for what the council member has proposed.
Well, and I mean, given that problem was fixed, I mean, what are your thoughts, Councilmember Bretafeld?
Well, you know, it is curious also. I didn't know this, but they consider added compliance with the grass when it reaches 12 inches. Is that correct? Which obviously takes a long time for that to become a big problem. I don't know what, again, council thinks about that. For my district, we don't have a lot of these issues, but this has been an ongoing issue. This property has been a problem for nine, 10 years. I mean, Mayor Brand was dealing with this for eight years. So, we may be in a position where we're actually going to get the property, because there's been another $40,000, I believe, in fines that she, this property owner, is not paying now. So now we have the means to seek the property. But I wanted to keep this on the agenda, just for discussion, because I know a lot of other council members have these problems in their district, maybe hundreds of some of these kinds of situations.
Maybe it requires a little bit more conversation with our city manager and the administration with regards to the implementation of that. I'm open to that conversation.
Councilmember Brenda.
So, Gary, what, so this property was abated this morning. What decision was made? What happened in your meeting yesterday? Why?
Well, they abated the property, took care of, you know, it continued to be blighted, which was mainly in the front. Thankfully, we haven't had people breaking in yet at this point. And again, Steve, I just see this as kind of an issue that we all struggle with, other council districts struggling a lot more than perhaps we do. The issue of, you know, this growing up, the grass growing till 12 inches before it gets abated, seems to me, maybe that's not the best way to go. But I just thought this would be a good idea to discuss and see what other folks think about these difficulties.
So, Wilma, what happens, or somebody from code or planning could tell me, what happens that we collect fines, but we don't abate until when? Or we don't, when do we actually go out and correct the problem? Because if I understand, I mean, the neighbors are the ones that get really ticked off about all of this. So, why don't we just, when we collect a fine, take care of that problem? And we do that for other issues. What's happening in this issue?
Go ahead, Kelly.
So the fine collection does not have any impact on our abatement of properties. Up until last week, we had to freeze on all of our abatements, with the exception of health and safety matters, because we had exhausted our abatement budget. We'd made some moves last week, and that's why we were able to with this, and a few other properties that have been on the tickler, we were able to get them abated this week. But the revenue collection, that is not part of our abatement process. Whenever we see something that needs abatement for one reason or another, typically health and safety reasons, we hire contractors and they abate the property.
Yeah, we have some follow-up questions, but I have a, first, I have a follow-up question to my own follow-up question. So, Kelly, so, and I think this is a nine-year-old problem, so at what point?
Eleven years.
Okay, so that answer doesn't really pass muster, to be honest with you. So, you just told me that we ran out of, we ran out of abatement money. Right, so.
It's not been out of compliance for 11 years. The neighbors have had this property next to them vacant for 11 years.
Okay. And my question is, when, and so we've been collecting fines, I think we collected $30,000 worth of fines?
So we assessed the property, and we sent it over to the county, and they put liens on the property. The county collects liens.
Yes.
People either pay them or they don't. And the county, once a year, twice a year, zero times a year, it depends, every year, they then pay us back in the general fund.
Bingo. And so, when they pay us back, it goes into a pot of money?
General fund.
For abatement problems?
No, for the general fund.
For general fund?
No, we get our abatement budget approved every year through the budgeting process. So it's just a line item in code enforcement budget.
So, when people pay fines, whether it's through, they cut a check, or they put a lien on their property, whichever way it goes, we don't actually use those fines to tackle that individual problem that caused the fine?
Correct. We do not.
Yeah. Then my goal, to answer your question, Councilmember Bretafeld, and I'll probably work on this and bring something forward, but my goal then would be to, if there's a property like this, it need, in the end, that's the property that needs to be fixed first, right? So it doesn't make sense for somebody to pay a fine, and the neighbors have to go through heck, because even though they're paid the fine, that property doesn't get abated. It goes into some pot of funding where we do just general city abatement, might end up across town on a whole different type of problem. So I do believe.
There's another issue, though, too. I mean, in essence, whenever we abate the property, and we mow the lawn, or we do lawn care, we're in essence bringing the property into compliance. So we have to be very mindful of that as well.
Mm-hmm.
And then we lose ability at that point to go out, and Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but we lose ability at that point to continue to find the property the minute we bring it into compliance. So in essence, we're enabling that property owner.
You know, Wilma, I think that makes sense, so that will just be a matter of getting the correct policy, because that makes sense, but that doesn't make sense to the 12 or 15 neighbors that are impacted by that, okay? And if it happens across the city, I'm sure it happens other places, that, you know, just we, we're not just serving that one customer, we're serving all of the people that have to deal with that individual or that property. So I think the proper policy could be written to take into account, you know, things you're concerned about, but things I'm concerned about as well.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Yeah. This is, we had this debate yesterday about enabling property owners by cutting this grass.
Bringing them into compliance.
And I don't agree with that in this instance. Certainly in some instances, that would be the case. The fact is, is it better to cut this grass and deal with the fact that we're not creating an environment for people to break in and create fire hazards and police responses? I think that is a fair argument. I think it's something that, in this case, it was merited to do that, because it's been a problem for nine or 10 years. We have not changed the lady's behavior simply by leaving it a blighted property. And so, we do have to take into account other neighbors, people who live in that neighborhood, and that's why I think we needed to do this. I think, Steve, there's also an important point, too. They're saying, staff, that the money goes into the general fund. That's true. I mean, all money that gets collected gets into general fund, and there are fines collected, but I'd like Doug to comment on this, because we kind of had this debate about budgeting. And so, Doug, can you comment on this, and I think at least offer the other side?
Yes, and I suppose Jane's the expert, but all fine revenue is essentially general fund revenue. But in each department's budget, it recognizes sources of revenue. And for example, in Darms budget, there's a line item in the revenue side recognizing fine revenue. And I don't know if that distinguishes when somebody comes in and pays a fine directly, or if it's indirectly paid through property tax collection. So there's a line item in the revenue side for fine revenue, and then that is appropriated on the expense side to be spent on things like abatement and so forth.
So, I think I've still got to.
I would like to point out just one, just one additional fact to what the city attorney just stated, is that for that specific line in the budget, in the budget document, actually, that was just issued yesterday, that particular fine revenue, which adds up to about 2.2 million, is actually parking revenue. It's parking fines. It's not fines connected to code enforcement. But it is, in fact, the penalties that are paid for parking violations, so.
If I, if I.
For that particular line.
And I'll just add a couple things. So, in terms of the issue, I think most of us, and I know in my side of town, I have a lot of issues of overgrown weeds, not just residential, but I think absentee commercial properties. And so, what I see and think from the discussion, it is essentially a policy call in terms of how we want to structure it. And I think that we should probably consider having a broader discussion in terms of the structure. Is it that beyond fine, we have a fine structure, but should we be adding the abatement cost, then the additional fine as the deterrent? And if we're doing abatement one time, it's a different fine. If we do two and three times, we should like double and triple those fines. So I think that we need to maybe relook at this policy and how we want to have some of those fines really cover, if we're going to be serious about, I guess, abating weeds. And I guess I'm just curious, maybe we should also get an update. I know that we sent out notices, right? A notice goes out. What is the level of compliance? I'm just, I'm curious in terms of the noticing that went out. Didn't it go out a few months ago or something?
Right, it just went out a few weeks back. And so, traditionally, we have handled it around fire season. We get really aggressive during fire season. But with Mr. Burns coming to the city, one of the things that we have reconfigured is having a year-round weed abatement team focused on this effort, so it doesn't get quite so bad right before fire season. So that team, yes, we did change it up a little bit this year. We continue to do the public notification through the B and everything like that. But we sent out notices to the frequent offenders, to folks that we abated last year, so that they would have some other form of written notice that they needed to bring it into compliance. We've been working with a lot of property owners, and we have this team of individuals going out and evaluating about 4,000 different vacant lots we have in the city. We're trying to be as proactive as possible on this, because it does create a terrible fire potential.
And then, Council President, if I may, too, we've been working with, you know, we've been, we have a great team with Kelly and her code enforcement and all the team, and then the city attorney's office. And we've actually been working with Doug on other options that they're exploring, on what we can do with repeat offenders, if you will. So whenever you started going down the line of, okay, this abatement cost is this, second time, it's this. So, you know, city attorney, do you mind kind of outlining some options and what your office is currently looking at?
Right. In light of this situation, this is an odd situation, this one property, because you've got somebody that basically doesn't take care of their property, they don't live in town, it's a vacant house, they've racked up now $70,000 in fines or so. They paid $30,000, but we still can't get compliance. If they didn't pay the fines, we would be able to go to court, get a judgment for the fines, and then have the sheriff sell the property. But when they pay, we don't have that option. So this is one of the cases where our code just doesn't get us there. So some options would be. So some options would be, well, provide code changes to allow maintenance using fine money already collected for that particular property. Maybe earmark a certain percentage of the fine revenue over and above our out-of-pocket costs that can be used for ongoing maintenance if necessary, maybe on a temporary basis. Second of all, you may look at strengthening the code to say for repeat offenders where other things haven't worked, make it a misdemeanor. This particular property owner that lives out of town, if she were served with a criminal summons, that would probably get her attention. So maybe some options like that we can draft up and be ready to bring back for you all.
Councilmember Brando.
Yeah, so actually, and everybody jumped in that and I don't mind to some extent, but I had a couple more. And you, you just tripped upon what I was going to ask of your office, Doug. If you could maybe set up a workshop, I see that we could, we've stumbled into this item today. Councilman Brettafield's got his one house taken care of. The rest of us have houses like that. If you could put maybe on the agenda, maybe three weeks or a month from now, and give you enough time to do this, give us a workshop on all types of these abatement issues and how this abatement program connects with parking violations and all that stuff. And give us some policy options so I want, I want that day, ability to vote on something. Give us some options to talk about how to overcome these, so these problems don't happen for 11 years before a councilman has to get personally involved before it gets fixed. So we can get these resolved much quicker in the future, so.
And we would like to work with you on that item because I want to look at the general fund impact. So if we're going to use fine money to abate the property and then in essence, charge back the property for that abatement, and we may not get paid back until the property is sold, I mean, who knows? We need to explore that to look at the general fund impact before we make any decisions. And so Doug, whenever, I'm happy to work with you on that.
Yeah, and thanks, Wilma. So I want this to be a very robust basket of options that includes going after the homeowner legally, like you talked about, maybe there is a misdemeanor involved, maybe it's the property, snatching the property involved, maybe whatever it takes involved.
I think this may be timely because it may include, for example, a budget amendment or something in the budget to earmark a certain portion of the fines collected for this purpose. So you may want to address that in the budget discussion too.
Okay, so if you guys can get together and I'll just consider that direction to staff then.
Member Brando, I know with the judgment, you can collect 10% interest, which is, reaches a judgment status, but I don't know if you'll lead a property if you get any kind of interest or small, but not the 10. Well, maybe we should have been in the charter and go 10 or 20% or 25%. I hear 30, I hear 30, 35%.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you. Council colleagues, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had that tragic fire on North Archie where the six people were killed in that house fire. And the analysis of that, we found that not only does the, he's an absentee landlord who lives out of town and I think even out of state, Vegas, I think it was, had two houses or even maybe more. And this, this guy was using the place, or using the city as the management company because at the end of the year, he would pay the fines and we would have to go out once a year, twice a year to care for the property and make sure it's boarded up and, and those weeds cut. So I'm curious, how many people are out there like this that are using the people as their management company? It would be a great piece of information. I mean, then maybe we'd have to try and think of some strategies to, to stop that practice, but I don't know what other cities do, but it would be great if we could. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add too, Doug and I talked yesterday, we plan on bringing back after our discussion, I think June 21st, the item on strengthening that with a misdemeanor. Because I think it is right, in this case, this was a woman who's not impacted, but maybe when she has a legal charge against her or someone else does, that may be a tool that we can have to get this in compliance.
Great, so I think the screen is clear. Did we already go out to the public? We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? There's going to be no action today, but I think that my council colleague, Steve Brando, gave some direction to our city attorney who will like work with our city manager. So there's none, so we'll just go ahead and see something come back in a few weeks. Great, thank you. Next, what we have on, I think that's all for the city council items. We have closed session remaining. I didn't do unscheduled communication yet. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak during this time on scheduled communication? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back. So we're going to be going to closed session. Just want to remind everyone, after closed session, we won't be coming back. So we will be adjourning in memory of Captain Mitchell and also former mayor of the city of Bakersfield, Harvey Hall. Perfect. City attorney?
Yes, in closed session, we have labor negotiations concerning CFPEA.